That sounds.
I am ready.
I am.
Okay, I will call the regular meeting of the town, which is the town council for Wednesday, October 14th, coming 21 to order and have a local vote, pardon me, poll call, poll call please.
Council members back?
Yeah.
Borelli, Frampton, Bramley.
Here.
Lakin.
Yeah.
Skyler, he's not present. Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
He's on Zoom.
Not yet.
Okay, not present. Mayor Clark.
Here, thank you. And for those folks on Zoom, if you can't hear us, please let Preston know in the chat so that we can, or somehow so that we can make sure everybody gets up on the microphone and talks. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I have two to request. The first is a discussion and direction, or an item for discussion and direction related to the Colorado opioid settlement and recovery funds.
Okay.
The second is review and action on membership changes in the Ridgeway Creative Garden Street.
Okay, great. That's a laid out in our packet. That first one, where do you want to end that one?
I think those two fit well.
Thank you.
Clark. Is your key on?
It's not. I was just on the rights of nature thing. I was just like sending email around everybody this afternoon. Figured I'd just run it up on the community boards. Anything else? If not, I will, or if anyone's pulled anything off the consent calendar, isn't it? Is that motion approved?
I approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Second, can you have a more color please?
Council members back?
Aye.
Borelli?
Aye.
Bramley?
Aye.
Lakin?
Aye.
Skyler?
Aye.
Is Mayor Pro Tim Meyer on the call?
Not yet. All right, this is anyway without the member in attendance. That brings us to the public comments section of the agenda. This is a time for anyone to address counsel for something that's not otherwise on the agenda. I believe we have at least one person who wants to comment.
I want to comment.
And, okay, let's deal with you guys first. Dana?
Okay, thank you. I am talking today because I'm not going to be here on the 21st. I'm going to see my grandkids for the first time in a year and a half, and I'll be in a plane to London. So I received this letter about the paving of Amelia Street on September 20th. It brought me to my knees. I practically started to cry because I have a problem with it. I, I don't, I don't know if this council knows that I have put, I am putting almost 200 acres into a conservation easement on the southwest side of town. And I, just for your information for people that might not know what I've been, I am trying to do, I'm going to pass out. Sorry, we need to do that. We need to say the nasty word.
Mic drop.
Part of mine, part of mine. Maybe you could put one up on for people to see. Anyway, when I got this letter, I literally started to cry because for you to insert 10 more feet of, of a carcinogenic, which asphalt is, on Amelia Street in front of my ranch, my 200 acre ranch, is the antithesis of what I have been trying to do with money that I don't really have a lot of. I've put a lot of money into trying to preserve. This is what I've been doing, you guys. This is the town of Ridgway. This is what I am trying to preserve for nature.
It's just so everybody knows, it's a portion of the open ground south of Sola Ranch that was owned by the Color family until recently.
So.
Putting it in.
It's going to take out at least five incredible trees, a crab apple that two young girls were just picking apples from, a huge juniper, some sort of a maple, and two cottonwoods, which pains me more than anything. The asphalt is horrible. The sidewalk is horrible. Taking out the trees is even more horrible. And I really would like to know from the town council exactly why you want to pave Amelia Street in one.
Can I address that?
Yeah.
This goes way back, probably.
That's what I've heard.
To when Pat Willis was mayor, prior to my time, and I'm in my 10th year, that the issue is primarily about the section of Amelia from the highway to County Road 5. And it's that section that's lined by, you know, the core of the lots and blocks of town, and then Marie Scott subdivision to the west. And we've had numerous complaints over the years of people, not only people speeding on that section of Amelia, but also because it's gravel and that we have to mag chloride to keep the dust down, that they're either complaining about the mag chloride or later in the year, we have the dust again. So it's, it's a health issue while I totally empathize with the comment about asphalt, that the dust is easily as big an issue, if not more, because of the PM10, they call it, the particulate matter less than 10 microns. So we've been working on this for more than 10 years to try and address the residents' concern. Now, what I wouldn't say to you right off the bat is that council's directed staff and engineer to design this. Now, they took it to Sabata in Sola Ranch pasture property, just as a plan to get the whole thing done. I don't think we necessarily have to go past County Road 5. And it's all a discussion item at this point. There's nothing.
All right, well, I have somebody representing me on the 21st, but I just want to speak to you because I have such a personal investment in this.
We hear you. And I just want to make sure you understand, nothing is decided. It's not set in stone.
Just the fact that I got this letter broke my heart. I just want you to know. I don't, maybe you don't know what I've been trying to do. And then when I first got the letter, I thought, does somebody have a vendetta against me? Or do they not want me to do what I'm doing? In which case, I haven't put that second conservation, you know, I stopped 90 houses from being built on the first 30 acres that I couldn't. 90 homes I stopped. And now I've stopped like five, but that would be 10, 10 with an ADU. So I just, it really broke my heart to think that.
It was not, it was not a vendetta against.
I know. I, that's what Pat told me that. Pat Willis said, don't, don't go there. But that's what I thought.
We also have all of the County Road 5 traffic traveling on a town street to get to County Road 5.
So this is what I want to say. County Road 5 is way more of an issue. I have, I can't tell you how many people come up to my ranch because they miss the turn to County Road 5. And then they, you need to at least get a bit better sign for County Road 5.
You will.
None of the neighbors on, none of the neighbors on my, on my silly little block, which goes from County Road 5 to Sabata, which is only me and the house and, and Robert Sabbath. We do not want it paved, FYI.
Dana, did you mention what Ireland is in the middle of your green?
Pardon me?
Did you mention?
Oh, yeah, that's the town water. It's a town water treatment plant.
Also mentioned what you're planning on doing.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to pat my back on that too much, but. Okay, I did a lot of research on asphalt, and I have some handouts for you, which asphalt is a lot more detrimental to the environment than dust. I guarantee you, dust is mother earth. And I have them for you. That's also going to encourage speed, not de-accelerate speed when you pave a road and widen it. And I just also want to say that I have, I can't tell you how many animals cruise through this property. I, little, big, skunks. I have 12 turkeys now that are residents on my property. You put a pavement in there and, and my horses, you know what happened on the highway. Those horses could happen any day when you pave that road and people are driving. You put pavement down and people don't, you know, they don't slow down. They don't see the tree that they have to go around or they're bombing through because they're going wherever they want. Pavement is for cars. Gravel and dirt are for people. And you need to start thinking about what we're doing in this town above and beyond just Amelia Street because that's the thing I was curious about when I read on, that you guys were going to try to do an ordinance for.
For race or nature?
Yeah, for nature. I'm hoping here it is. Ridgway may join, I don't know, municipalities in, well, you know what it is. Nature has legal rights. I think you, what happened with that?
It's still in the works.
It was presented September 8th. Where did it go from there?
We're still working on it.
Are you?
This is our first meeting since September 8th.
Oh, okay. Well, I hope that you work on it because it's really important.
We just mentioned that it's being addressed.
All right. Okay. Well, I just was curious. And then not to mention the cost, which I heard was going to be over $3 million for that road. All right. So I think you guys know where I stand on this. I don't, I know it's only five minutes that I have here.
Definitely empathize with your comments. And like I say, nothing is set in stone. That's why we're having this meeting.
Nothing's set in stone or asphalt? Let's hope not, because.
Thanks for your time. We appreciate it.
Yeah, well, so this is a packet. There's a bunch of articles on how terrible asphalt is for the environment and some other stuff that I printed out. If you're interested, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dana. Appreciate it.
Time to speak with Brett. Yep. I hope that you all, you know.
We're doing what? We're doing our best. It's balancing it.
We'll see next.
Thank you. My big malls, real forums of the street, a few just random things to throw out. I had already mentioned to Preston and John in the mail, but I just want to throw it out to a bigger group. A suggestion of putting in traffic lights on both the pedestrian crosswalks of Amelia and Lena. I cross Amelia a lot. Now that I'm part of the area, it's sort of like a regular route. And it's frightening how many semi trucks are going like 40 miles an hour down that hill. And cars don't stop a lot for pedestrians. And the, the only thing I heard back from these guys was it might not be okay because that's a state road. But I'm requesting to look into it because Montrose on Townsend, which is also a highway, there's tons of traffic lights on that road. And the thing, the thoughts are, it could be creating more safety. It could generate income. And I always hear that the marshals are taxed, so you could free up them. And I have a feeling it probably paid for itself really fast. And it's not just for speed. It's for like people that don't honor pedestrians because the sign says it's the law. They have to stop. So that's one idea. Gosh, nerves up here.
I could do that.
It's sort of Dana, and I'll be at the meeting on the 21st. I'm not a fan of the pavement. Another random thing is I noticed the dog laws, the website you have based posted. It doesn't say anywhere that it's illegal to let your dogs chase wildlife. And I believe that is the law. And I feel like the more places that's written down, the stronger it'll get.
Okay, who can have staff look at that?
Yeah.
Something else?
Completely forgot the other one. But time for another meeting. Anyway, thanks for your, thanks for what you do. Oh, I misremembered. I applaud you guys, the conservation thing that I've just gotten emailed for like promoting zero escapes and stuff. And I'm total, it's water consciousness, I think, is so important in Southwest, but I don't want us to forget the value of trees and planting trees and that they absorb carbon dioxide. So just like.
It's another one.
Okay, thank you.
That's right. Thanks, Dana. And just, you know, we're in, in the Cam Andrews report, there's a item reporting on his meeting, we see that about the highway issues. And they're, they're doing some things. They're, they're potentially going to put some permanent radar speed things up on both sides, both ends of the highway. Just for clarification, are you, was your suggestion that we actually put up stoplights?
No, cameras.
Oh.
And can you like give people electronic tickets?
I don't.
I don't think you can.
I don't think you can anymore. I think it's been, in many states, it's been kind of overruled as an overreach by law enforcement. But we'll look into it for sure.
And you're, you're 100% right. Like, to, you know, every five cars doesn't stop there. You were absolutely on point.
And I, you know, we've been talking to the Marshals Department about, you know, issuing some tickets so people start getting, word gets out. We're not putting up with it anymore. So we're doing a number of things on different fronts to try to address it. So, thank you. Anyone else? Is Robin waiting online?
Yeah, I'm here, counsel.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and I think I can't put my video on, so I think that's from the tech end on your end, and that's fine with me. Start my video. Okay. Thank you. Hi. Robin Cascade, 575 Sabata, representing Great Old Broad for Wilderness this evening. And I just first want, unrelated to my comments tonight, just want to thank council specifically, Councilwoman Lakin and Mayor Clark for that letter to the BLM Gunnison Field Office with regard to the domestic sheep grazing permit renewal on such short notice. Just so appreciate that, you know, in terms of your support for the risk posed to the bighorn sheep herd up in that Bear Creek engineer area. So thanks so much on that. Tonight, I want to talk to you about the GMUG Forest Plan. As you probably know, the draft was released on August 13th, and we have until November 12th to submit comments. Thank you so much for your past support. And we have your letter on file, council's letter on file for your support of the, what's known as the Community Conservation Proposal. And in particular, tonight, I wanted to see if council planned on submitting comments on the draft forest plan and, and/or the draft EIS before the November 12th deadline. Specifically, we have a couple of requests. Baldi Mountain and Bear Creek as recommended wilderness. And I'm thrilled to let you know that the URA Board of County Commissioners has come out in support of those two recommended wilderness areas, which means they will have more status within the Forest Service. They are recommended as wilderness and alternative D. And if you know the way land management agencies work, alternative D is oftentimes the most conservation minded proposal. They are not recommended as wilderness and alternative B, which is typically, I mean, what they're calling right now the blended alternative, but really it's the preferred alternative, even though the Forest Service isn't officially saying that. Baldi comes out as a wildlife management area in alternative B, and Bear Creek is general forest, which means it has no protection whatsoever beyond any other forest. And, and I'll just tell you that they, they're even proposing to like cut timber in the Bear Creek Basin in alternative B, which would not happen in alternative D. We, you have already supported special interest areas for the 10,000 acres of Hayden Mountain and a smaller area, about 2,300 acres of Abram, Mount Abram, Brown Mountain. And finally, a really exciting thing that has recently come to pass is we've been supporting, we, meaning Broads, and our coalition of like 15 to 18 conservation groups have been supporting Bear Creek as wild and scenic eligible, does not appear in the draft plan, but just last week, the Board of County Commissioners came out in support of Bear Creek as wild and scenic river eligible. So again, that will be elevated hopefully in the final draft. So those are some of the kind of big key issues, along with the bighorn sheep, protection of that tier one herd, the timber, and I can supply you with lots of information. I just went kind of checking in. And then the final one would be, we've been concerned all along that the tribal consultation, which is required by law, has been pretty inadequate, might be too strong a word, but I would say that it has not been robust or in good faith. And that term good faith is in the actual law that requires federal agencies to consult with tribal entities, sovereign nations. So those are kind of some of the issues. And just now, would just love to hear if you're kind of up to speed on the draft plan, if there's any intention for the town of Ridgway to comment. And again, happy to submit, supply you with whatever information you need, talking points, et cetera.
Thanks, Robin. To this point, we have not discussed commenting on the draft plan, but I think we'd probably be open to that. Toward that end, we might ask that you send us some information by email, some of the things you've mentioned, just so we have that. I'm guessing the majority of us would be supportive, but of course, not prepared to act on it tonight. But we appreciate your input, and I do think it's extremely important, if I'm not mistaken, this is the first update to the plan since the 80s, if I'm.
1983, yep.
So it's a big deal.
It is. You and I won't be around for the next one if it takes that long, Mayor Clark. Well, I don't know. John might be around, but I'm not planning on it.
Robin, do you have any specific comments from tribes on feeling like the tribal portion hasn't been done in good faith? I hate.
Yeah, you know, I have, is that, I can't actually see you, but I assume that's Councilwoman Lakin. I have been in contact with two tribal councilwomen from Southern Ute who have, in personal conversation, let me know that the, basically, the GMUG Forest is continuing, you know, a pattern of not really true consultation. They, they send an email, and then if they don't get an immediate response, they don't follow up. I actually have a little bit better communication with you, Mountain Ute, and I will just share with you that it's a very long, slow process to build these relationships. And I offered to kind of assist the Forest Service in this process and was kind of told that I don't have a place in this. And, you know, I know that I'm not a sovereign nation, and neither is Great Old Broad, and we're not party to the actual sovereign nation to sovereign nation conversation. But we do feel like we have two roles. One is if we have relationships with tribal leaders, that we'd be happy to make those introductions with the Forest Service. And two, we feel like we also have a right, both as individuals and as an organization, to hold the federal agency accountable to the law like we do around oil and gas, or endangered species, or recreation. You know, it's a law that they are required. And, and when I talk with folks at Ute Mountain Ute, again, I hear that, you know, resources are limited. They are much more comfortable with face to face or phone conversations than email communication. I mean, even a telephone call is so much better. There is a new, what's called Program Heritage, Program Heritage Director or Coordinator, Amanda Sanchez at the GMUG office in Delta. And I'm hoping that along with Sam Staley, the lead forest planner, that they are making a little bit better progress. They promised in a webinar that they wanted to do better. I just don't know if it's happened. And I have asked my contacts at the tribes, you know, is this going on? And I'm not hearing back. So.
That's helpful. That's some context.
Yeah, that's very helpful. So in the interest of keeping moving, I think I'll just say, thanks for your input and hope you'll send us some stuff, some background and some of the, particularly, and I'll reach out to Ben Tisdale, the Chair of the OCC, and get what they've taken action on. I saw it was on the agenda last, last week, was it?
They had a work session on the 6th, and they have another one on the 20th.
Okay, so we'll make sure we coordinate them and appreciate your input.
Great. And Mayor Clark, to whom should I directly send it? Everybody or just you or you?
Why don't you send it to Pam Craft and she'll distribute it.
Great. And then the only other question I have, and then I'll get out of your hair, is I don't know that your next meeting happens before the 12th. I didn't double check, the 12th of November. So if there's.
It's the 10th.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so you could approve a letter and zap it off on the 11th. Okay, great. Thanks so much for your time. I appreciate you all.
Thanks, Robin. All right. Anyone else have a public comment, something we, which isn't already on the agenda? No? Okay, so that takes us to public request and presentations. I believe most of you are here for this next one. Presentation regarding valid issue 4A, Ridgway School District members are the next two general fund override and valid issue 4B, Ridgway School are two general obligation bonds. Mercedes, meeting.
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mercedes Gall, and I am incredibly nervous. I am the Chair of the ballot. My name is Mercedes Gall, and I am the Chair of the Citizens for Ridgway R2 Campaign Committee to pass ballot issues 4A and 4B. Thank you for the opportunity to present to our town council. I am here this evening to provide advocacy for our children in the Ridgway community, as well as clarity on the facts of these two critically important ballot initiatives. Before highlighting the issues, I wanted to share some personal background on why I'm here. Ridgway has been my home my entire life. I quite literally was born 200 yards from the room we are in right now. I walked the halls of what is now our elementary school from second to ninth grade. I was a member of the first year class to graduate in the new secondary school. The contrast between the two buildings was staggering then, and it still is today. And now, my own kids, Gemma and Cameron, ages five and nine, walk those same elementary halls. And I know their future depends on my advocacy to them and their peers. Our 1972 elementary building is currently in need of extensive asbestos mitigation, has outdated boilers and electrical systems, lacks appropriate fire and front security features. The teachers, staff, and administration continue to have to put Band-Aids on the school facility that has in every way exceeded its useful life. Radiation of these issues is long overdue and should have been addressed years ago. Meanwhile, we know that the single most important factor in a child's education is quality teachers. And yet, due to some ongoing challenges of public school state funding, we are not able to pay our teachers enough to live in our community. And many of them find themselves second jobs simply to pay rent. These two ballot initiatives will not fully address Ridgway School funding challenges, but they will help. Passing 4A and 4B is one of the strongest supports we can provide for Ridgway Schools at a local level. The two initiatives are 4A, a mill levy override, and 4B, a bond proposal. The bond measure is not a tax increase and simply continues the existing rate. And the mill levy override is an increase of $2.75 per month of 100,000 in a home's assessed value. For the average home owner, it would be a monthly increase of a cheap sandwich to provide basic safety and education for our kids. I also want to share some context on the overall approach being taken by the district. For three years, the Ridgway School District has been through planning with consistent input from the community through both a strategic planning committee and then a multi-state. through both a strategic planning committee and then a multi-stakeholder task force. On recommendations from the community, the district has chosen a fiscally conservative approach that does not involve a tax increase for the badly needed facility repairs and improvements. The district plans to renovate and approve an existing elementary building versus building a whole new elementary school. A new school would cost well over forty million dollars and would require a significant tax increase. Not only can we simply pass four B, which has zero increase in taxes, but our tax dollars can go even further with grant money. As a result of the district's hard work, we have secured a seven point six million dollar state fest grant to support the renovation work contingent on passing four B. If the bond does not pass, we, as a Ridgeway community, lose seven point six million dollars of free money for our students and schools. That's all to say that even if your only concern is paying the least amount in taxes possible over the next ten years, passing these two initiatives is your best, is in your best interest. As taxpayers, we will definitely pay more later if four A and four B do not pass now. I want to clarify on another point, important point. When the assessed value of your property goes up, the school does not receive those increased taxes. School districts don't work like the town or county or library or fire districts. The county's revenues may go up, but the state of Colorado offsets increases in property tax revenue by cutting state revenue to our district. The School Finance Act of nineteen ninety-four prohibits schools from directly benefiting from a rise in assessed property value. Once more, state of Colorado has already taken more than five point three million dollars from the Ridgeway School District's revenue through the negative factor over the last twelve years. The only way a school district can increase operational revenue beyond its people count and the state calculated funding, school funding formula is through a local mill levy. I want to note that I am joined here today by former county, Eray County Commissioner, former Ridgeway Mayor and former school board president, Don Bachelder, who has been a champion of these ballot initiatives and is an expert on school finance and can answer any additional questions on the finance front. Thank you for your support, Don. I know now, I know some of you may be thinking, don't worry, I'm in full support of these measures. And that's essential and I deeply thank you on behalf of our students, but please know that that alone won't be enough. We need your advocacy and your communications and your networks and the voters in our community. I would ask in your, ask for your support in finding ways you can personally advocate, encourage your local network to support these measures. The time is now to ensure our kids attend a safe, thriving school. As a result of our collective hard work, we have the most fiscally prudent plan and opportunity to do that. Please join me in voting yes on four A and four B. Thank you.
Great company. Um, my family has known me since you were dating. She grew up with my younger daughter, very close in age, so um, it's so great to see you take the role. It's really fills my heart.
Really fills my heart and I'm really happy and uh feel privileged to be able to do so for our children and our community.
Such a great example of how great this community is at coming out when we need to and having these multi-generational support networks. So it's, it's really huge. And Don, thank you for being here. Um, I know some of the rest of you are here in support as well. Um, I don't know, I was just sitting here thinking whether it would be appropriate for council to actually vote to formally support these measures or whether it's more appropriate for us to do so individually. Um, I can't remember if I've ever been asked to do that.
Ask Boda, you've actually provided a legal assessment, but I, I don't think there's anything to preclude you from from expressing support as a collective body.
Okay, um.
Hey, hey, Mayor. Hey, um, Preston, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
So Preston's correct. Um, if the board wanted to um, make a motion in support of uh, about questions four A and four B, you could do that. Um, you, you know, this is a little bit different in that uh, this isn't a town question where we would have certain considerations there. Um, so you would be okay with respect to that process.
Great, thanks. Um, so I guess my question to council would be, is there consensus in doing something like that?
Yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I move to do that.
Ballot issues four A and four B.
That's correct. Okay, somebody want to second that? We'll say that uh, Terry still votes to support, uh, to formally support measures four A and four B and I'm sorry, you second. Um, Kevin seconded on your discussion. A local vote, please.
Councilmember Spack?
Aye.
Farley?
Aye.
Bramble?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Skyler?
Aye.
Mayor for Temeyer?
Aye.
There we go. Welcome, Russ.
Yep.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Jean?
Yes, um, my question was just why are the two issues financed differently?
Um, maybe Don could address that. Um, I have.
Again, one, so one's a bond issue. Typically, bond issues are used for capital improvements and that's the case. The other ones are mill levy override and mill levy overrides typically used for ongoing operations. Just, I hope that answers it.
Sure.
And, and isn't one um, kind of like, uh, there, there's one, there's a funding source that's sunsetting in this kind of bond issue. So the gem is going to be paid off next year. Um, and so if this passes, there will be no increase in what you pay. Um, that always maybe said, um, it's sort of a no-brainer. There's no increase in, in what anyone's paying and giving seven point six million dollars. It's a continuation of a bond that would sunset.
It's not actually a continuation. What expires and, and you're pulling another one. It's the same one.
Same idea. Cool, thanks. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Anyone else? I'm sorry, I didn't ask the question. Thanks, Mimi. Thanks, Don. Thanks, everybody, for being here.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Under network. Uh, that takes us to item number four, our presentation of the twenty twenty fiscal year audit. Blair, are you on Zoom?
He is.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna briefly go over the two thousand twenty highlights of the audit. And I think I'll start with the management report. You should have two packages. You should have a management report and then you should actually have the audit report. I'm gonna.
Sorry, we've got a conversation will be just last night. Okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna start with the management report. And it's gonna highlight what happened in two thousand twenty. And I'm gonna go to the third page of that report where it talks about the positive operations and talks about the fund balances and the working capital. And as you can see, there's gonna be two columns there. One is in blue, one is a red. And the blue one is what you ended the year end at for two thousand twenty and the red one is what it was in two thousand nineteen. So if you take that first column, the general fund started out with a fund balance of about one point six, ended up being a fund balance of about two point one. So the fund balance in the general fund actually went up about six hundred thousand. If you look at the water fund, it started out about seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, ended up being nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, so it went up about two hundred thousand. And then the sewer fund pretty well broke even and it only went up about thirteen thousand. If you go to the next page, it actually shows the operating revenues compared to what you budgeted. And if you look at that, you budgeted about two point six million for the general fund and revenues actually came in just less than about three million. Uh, so the revenues actually went up about three hundred and sixty thousand. The biggest amount of the increase was in sales tax. Sales tax actually increased compared to the budget for about two hundred and eight thousand. Uh, part of that was they started to tax internet cells under that Wayfair Act, and I think that's helped out a lot of towns and a lot of counties. If you look at the water fund, the actual revenues were a little bit less than what you budgeted. Uh, you took in about fifty-five thousand more in water charges, but tap fees and other revenues were down a little bit. And then if you look at the sewer fund, same thing happened there. Uh, taffees were down to what you budgeted and so was the miscellaneous revenues. If you look at the next graph, which is on the next page, operating expenditures, you had budgeted, you always do this on a conservative basis, you had budgeted to have expenditures of about three million in the general fund and end up being around two point three million. Uh, the big difference there was in consultant fees, about a hundred and five thousand were less and capital outlay was about two hundred thousand less. And the same way with the water and the sewer, you had budgeted a little bit high on those, ended up being a little bit lower. All those differences were in repairs and maintenance expenses and capital outlay. And I think probably because of COVID nineteen, a lot of projects weren't getting done in two thousand twenty. I'm gonna briefly go over the audit report. As we talked about in the past, the only estimates in the audit report is depreciation cost. And then we did make around thirteen audit adjustments to your books, which is pretty close to what it was in two thousand nineteen. If you go to page one and two, the actual audit opinion, it's a clean opinion. There's no modifications to that. Uh, the financial statements that you're getting monthly from the finance department are in really good shape. And therefore, we, there was no modifications to that. If you go to page three through page ten, I think, is the M D N A report. You're gonna get a lot of information off that. I'm not gonna really go through all that, but if you go to page five, it, there's a table there that will actually give you a comparison of two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty broken down between the governmental activities and the business type activities. And again, the business type activities is your water and your sewer fund. And then the governmental activities, of course, is your general fund and your capital project fund. But if you go to far right column of that, you're gonna see that your total assets increased in two thousand twenty by about one point five million. Some of that was uh, capital projects. I think you were working on some capital projects in the capital project fund of the Pavilion. And also, you were also doing something with Create Space or.
Screen, right.
And that right there was about, I think roughly about eight hundred thousand. Uh, cash did go up about half a million. If you go to total liabilities, total liabilities went down because you were paying off some of your debt and that dropped by about a hundred and thirty thousand. And then if you go to the next page, which is on page six, it's actually gonna give you a comparison of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty as far as revenue and expenses. Again, we pretty well talked about it through that management report. Uh, total revenues compared to two thousand nineteen actually increased by about eight hundred thousand. You did get some COVID relief money. But most of that was sales tax again. A lot of that was increase in uh charges for services in the enterprise funds. If you look at the expenses, which I thought was kind of interesting, uh, the expenses actually went down. In two thousand nineteen, they were about three point four million. They actually went down to about three point one. Some of that was uh, budgeted projects and repairs and maintenance that you budgeted that did not quite get done in two thousand twenty. So if you take overall, if you look at that, the uh, town increased their net position, which is the third, second line, the third line from the bottom. They increased their net position by one point seven million, which I thought was pretty remarkable with being hit with COVID nineteen. If you go to page nineteen, this is statement of cash flows. It talks about, which is your water and your sewer fund. If you go about halfway down that page, you're gonna see that you actually increased cash in the water and the sewer fund by about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And that was still after you did about four hundred thousand dollars in capital assets. So if you took all the funds overall and you looked at them, the general fund now has about one years, their fund balance equals about one years of expenditures. And the water and the sewer fund, as far as the enterprise funds, are in really, really good shape. And then I'm gonna skip a couple real quick footnotes. Is if you go to page twenty-eight, and you go about halfway down page twenty-eight, it talks about all your investments that the town has. At the end of two thousand and twenty, the town had about three point seven million in cash and investments. Sixty-five percent of that money was invested either in C-Safe or Color Trust. Uh, they're triple eight rated. No problem there. And the rest of that was under the Public Deposit Protection Act. So all your investments are good investments. You don't have problems there. In two thousand and twenty, interest rates were low. Uh, they're still a little bit low right now, but they're actually starting to go up a little bit. If you go to page twenty-nine to thirty-one, it lists all the debt that the town has. The town really doesn't have a lot of debt. Probably fifty percent of the debt is under those general obligation bonds that you did in two thousand and fourteen. So if you go to page thirty-one, it actually breaks down that last table there on page thirty-one actually breaks down all the debt that the town has. And if you go to that far right column, what's your yearly debt payments are. But again, I said, the town really doesn't have a lot of debt there. And then if you go to page thirty-three, capital assets, you had a couple of projects that you were working on, which was the Pavilion and uh, that other project. And you had about seven hundred and twenty-six thousand in construction in progress on those. And then you had, you did buy some equipment and vehicles in the uh, water and sewer, sewer fund. Overall, the, the books are in really good shape. They always are. Uh, I think Pam and her staff did a really good job. And as I said, probably the same amount of adjustments we made in two thousand twenty were about the same in two thousand nineteen. So if you want to look at overall in two thousand twenty, you're a little bit better off than you were in two thousand nineteen. And the town is in very good shape. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Mimi. Really appreciate the, the effort and, and the detail. It's, it's pretty exciting to see um, how, what we're doing and how great a job staff does to keep us, keep us doing as well as we are. Um, anyone in council have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for P. Clarification you've mentioned, I think in reference to one bullet on page ten, Town's General Fund has a fund balance that will cover a year's worth of normal expenditures, but in the report, it says three months. Is something changed or is there? So.
I think we probably should have changed that page ten because you actually do have a year of fund balance compared to your. of fund balance compared to your expenditures. Your, your fund balance in the general fund right now is about two point one million. Your normal expenditures in the general fund is about two million. So you're just above that.
Great, thank you.
That was a good catch.
Yeah, I think, um, the recommendation should have at least three months of fund balance to cover it. We have more than that, so that's possibly where that came from. And they could catch anyone else. Questions for Pete? Anyone in the audience, either on Zoom or here in the room? Your kids want to know all about this. Big numbers. Um, anybody got their hand up on Zoom?
Don't run too.
Okay. Uh, well, thanks, Pete. We really appreciate it as always. And again, uh, big shout out to Pam and her staff for doing such a great job with the town's finances.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great day.
You guys have a good day. Thanks again. All right, that takes us to we have three public hearings tonight. Item number five, six, and seven. And, uh, just as a reminder, uh, for public hearings, we have to take a little bit more formal process where if anyone wants to comment, either on Zoom or here in person. Um, I'll let you know when I'm opening it up for public comment, and you'll have to, uh, state your name and address before you make your comment. And then when public comment is done, I'll include the public comment section of, of the review. It's just, uh, state law requires that formality. So item number five is a application for plat amendment. Location with L Stanton Business Park lots two R and three R, block two. Address is one eighty Udel Drive, Zone's General Commercial. Advocate is Tate Rogers. Owner is Eden twenty twelve, your multiple family trust. And so we've uh, TJ from the planning consultant will be leaving this up. Is that right?
That's right.
But TJ.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Council. Um, yep. So as you've mentioned, the first thing we have on the agenda or the public hearing we have this evening is a amended plat request. The current owner of lot three R is wanting to sell the property uh, and, and has had multiple potential buyers ask about the limitation on residential uses be, being removed from the plat. The applicant is requesting to amend note five, which explicitly states that zero residential units uh, are allowed on lot three R in order to allow the property to, excuse me, develop uh, pursuant to the general commercial zone district standards established in section seven, three, eleven of the Ridgeway Municipal Code. So a little bit of background on this parcel, it was originally platted back in nineteen eighty-four as lot three, block two of Ladell Stanton Business Park subdivision. The plat created, that plat created twenty-three lots, one outlot, sixty foot of right of way for Ladell Drive and forty feet of right of way for Campbell, uh, Campbell Drive, uh, and the twenty-foot alley, providing access to the south side of lots one through five of block three. In September of twenty, uh, two thousand and seven, excuse me, lots two and three went through a replat, uh, ad amendment process to adjust the shared property line between the two lots. This created lots two R and three R block two. Um, which is what we're looking at this evening. And as part of that plat amendment, note five was added to limit the number of residential, well, uh, units on to five on block, on lot two R and zero residential units on lot three R. So, um, the here, this evening, uh, sorry, this hearing this evening has been noticed and posted by the town in accordance with the Ridgway Municipal Code. Have to get in there, that and there for the record. So a little bit of our analysis, uh, first related to the master plan. This property is identified as a mixed use business on the future land use map of the two thousand nineteen master plan. Um, a, a table indicating the densities, primary and support uses and characteristics of each of, I'm sorry, of the future land use classification has been provided in memo that was provided to council. Um, it's, uh, we want to at least point out, um, that, that upon this request and a few others, actually, some of the others we're talking about this evening. We wanted to bring to council's attention that, um, staff has a, a, is starting to get concerned that a number of recent projects, including this one, opens the door for decreased commercial service, office, and manufacturing uses, which may begin to upset the balance of land uses throughout the town. We bring this up simply to remind the council, uh, that an overall balance of land uses that is commercial, residential, and industrial is, uh, necessary for a vibrant and sustainable community. Um, the property is currently vacant and no development plan is being proposed at this time. Therefore, all uses that would be allowed within the underlying zoning district, general commercial, may be allowed with the removal of this plat note. Uh, those, um, essentially, the, uh, the following uses would be allowed by right, including multiple fam-, multi-family residential or multi-family dwellings, live-work dwellings, group homes, and employee housing, which may not be allowed right now with the, with that note. An additionally, um, conditional uses in the G C zone would be, um, town homes, triplexes, and fourplexes. So with the removal of that plat note, those are potential uses that would be allowed. Uh, the current subdivision and lot does appear to be able to meet, uh, all the dimensional standards of the general commercial zone district. Uh, when the applicant submits a land use application, those standards will be applied at that time. Um, access to both of these lots, uh, is, is, uh, obtained directly from Ladell Street. Lot two R utilizes an access easement that was established with the two thousand and seven amended plat uh, for access to the property across lot three R. Um, at the time, lot three R develops, requiring a shared access point to minimize access uh, to Ladell Drive and have organized and safe ingress and egress onto Ladell Drive should be encouraged. And again, that will be um, discussed and, and, uh, uh, determined through a, the next phase of the process or the next stage of the process. Utilities are also available in Ladell Drive, uh, to adequately serve the both lot two and three R, um, with or without this note. Um, at such time, the property develops, the applicant will need to, uh, provide adequate information to ensure that both water and sewer systems have adequate capacity. To serve the proposed uses at that time. It's also important to note that lot two R is, while lot two R is not within, within the uncompragory River Overlay District, lot three R is. Therefore, any future development on lot three will have to meet the standards and limits uh, of that overlay district as set forth in section seven, three, fourteen of the Ridgway Municipal Code. Furthermore, a small portion of the southeast corner of the lot of lot three R appears to be located within the hundred-year floodplain. And again, we would have to confirm that through, uh, next phases of, of the, uh, development process. Um, so the Planning Commission, the Ridgway Planning Commission, held a public hearing on, uh, August thirty-first to consider the request. Following the public hearing and discussion, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the plat amendment with recommended staff conditions one through five and added a sixth condition stating that, um, note five shall be amended to say the, uh, the residential dwellings on lot three R will be limited to five. So in essence, the discussion was to, uh, rather than eliminate the, uh, the, the prohibition of residential uses was to, uh, limit it to five residential dwelling units. So therefore, um, following all of that, staff would recommend that council, um, uh, if, um, council approved the plat, uh, amendment with the following conditions. One, replace, or I'm sorry, reproducible mylar, uh, properly executed by all parties except town officials be submitted to the town within thirty days of approval of the subdivision by the town council. Two, an updated final plaque with all information required by section seven, four, five, C three of the Ridgway Municipal Code be submitted to the town for review prior to recording of the plat amendment with Hura County Clerk and Recorder's Office. Um, uh, add a new note seven stating a residential, uh, any residential you, uses developed on lot three shall pay the required development excise tax as described in, uh, in chapter four, section four, development excise tax of the Ridgway Municipal Code as may be amended from time to time. Four, the owners of lot two R shall sign the amended plat prior to recording of said plat amendment with the Hura County um, clerk and recorder's office. And five, any future development proposing four or more residential dwellings should re- provide affordable housing units consistent with the town's policies, goals, and regulations at the time of development. And six, note five shall be amended to say that the residential dwellings on lot three R will be limited to five. So that is, uh, our staff rec, our, our, our presentation this evening. I believe that the applicant is here, uh, to give a presentation as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission might have. Or, sorry.
Thanks, TJ. Um, before we do that, why don't we give, um, Tate a chance to add any comments?
Thanks a lot for your time, uh, for Rogers, uh, representing owners, uh. I think the staff recommendation is appropriate, uh, you know, for the amendment, uh, when this, um, restriction was put on it, you know, it's a different time. I think the highest and best use for the property will be worked through by a future owner and the town will always have input, uh, planning commission, and you guys will always have input on what is up in there. There's no plans for it right now. Uh, but to have the flexibility to have five residential units on a over a epic or lot on a G C lot, I think is appropriate. Um, and I think anybody that's going to develop that lot is going to, highest and best use is going to be a, a multi-use type of, uh, improvement. That will still generate a significant commercial revenue. So, like I said, I appreciate your consideration and hope that you'll, um, love this amendment, uh, your theory. Thanks.
Thanks, David. Anyone from council having any questions for you, TJ or Tate?
Yeah, a quick question. Just for clarification, on, on bullet six, the limitation of five residential dwellings, is a residential dwelling, individual residential dwelling, in other words, is a fourplex, four out of that five?
Correct.
It's not five buildings, it's five.
Correct, five units.
I might have reread the five again.
Okay. Comments, questions? Um, all right, I will open up the public hearing portion of this. Public comment portion of this public hearing, um, anyone here on Zoom or in the audience here in the room have any questions or comments about this side? What do you have, zoom? Twenty-one, please. All right, I will close the public comment, uh, section and bring back up here for deliberation. Let's appeal on the board.
I think this makes sense. I don't know what the logic was when the residential units were removed from that, but I think returning it to the general expectations of the zoning seems totally fair.
Yeah, I, I will add, as someone who also sits on the planning commission and was sitting on the mission when this originally went through, I racked my brain, I could not remember what I'm doing, so, um, I, I agree. Makes sense to, uh, return it to primarily what's allowable by the new one zoning. That the additional limitation of the one and five, I think is helpful in recognition of, uh, TJ's mention the need to try and protect our commercial zoning from being overrun residences. So, anybody else?
Um, I just, it seems to me that five, like, uh, um, items five, six, and seven are very similar in that they're both all asking for mixed residential usage. And so just try and figure out, um, how do we keep a balance for, uh, commercial space instead of residential? I know that there's a housing crisis and stuff, and I know that we need more houses. And I know that mixed residential has conditional uses for retail restaurants, um, and you know, live-work dwellings as well, but just like, how do we, is there a way that we can, or should we even try to, um, figure out a way of saying like, some of these have to be like, um, retail restaurant, like set aside for that sort of thing so that we can maintain a balance and not just have everything be residential housing, which again, I know we need.
Angela, thanks. I agree with you. I think this, I think we have to take each one of these on their individual merits. This one, I think, because it is a general commercial district, and this is a single piece of property with a weird note.
Okay.
Um, it makes, it seems to make sense to me that if we don't know the why of this one and we can't see the why, this one should be.
Second.
Yeah, I think, um, that's the point. You have to take them individually and your concerns are, are out. But I, um, we have to focus on this one at this point. In a perfect world, a mixed-use residential commercial spot, exactly like Tate said, it's perfect for that. I'm on sport.
And then like that would come in from the any zoning, any, I mean, like you said, we'll just, we'll take them as they come.
Yeah, depending if it's used by right, wouldn't necessarily go before the planning commission, but, um, staff will have some opportunity, so. All right, so we want to make a motion or is there more discretion?
I'll move to approve the plat amendment with six noted conditions to rid them all. No, that's fine.
Yep, that's fine.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made. Second, anything other discretion? Uh, vote call, vote please.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Garellie.
Aye.
Gramley.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Skyler.
Aye.
Mayor Per Tim Meyer.
Aye.
All right, I see you man, so they rotate that here. All right, that brings us to item number six, which, uh, is a rezoning request, um, for the park. This is part by one track D, address T B D, Zone Line Industrial, I one, applicant of the Investments LLC owner of the falls. I believe, uh, Jack Pitcher Sully is here representing the owner, and TK take it away.
There we go. Um, excellent. Well, thanks again. Um, so as you mentioned, what we have here for public hearing number two is, is a rezoning request from light industrial one to mixed residential. So the applicant is requesting to rezone track D of River Park Business Park. It always gets me every time. River Park Business Park filing one from light industrial, uh, one to mixed residential M R. Uh, the subject property is located east of, uh, River Park Drive, west of Cora Street, and north of Railroad Street. The parcel is surrounded by light industrial to the east, uh, and south, and residential zone district to the north and west. The lot is currently vacant with no existing structures or improvements. San Miguel Power Association facilities borders the property to the east and adjacent properties to the north and west are residential uses. Across River Park Drive, right of way to the east, um, actually, that should be to the west. Um, are a mix of housing types, including single-family duplex and triplex uses. The Cora Street right of way borders the property to the east. However, the roadway improvements, uh, between Escalante Circle to the north and North Railroad Street to the south are not installed or improved. Such improvements will be the responsibility of the developer of this parcel at the time the parcel is developed. Um, again, the property and, uh, and hearing have been noticed and posted by the town in accordance with the Ridgway Municipal Code. Um, as far as related to the master plan, this parcel is identified as mixed-use business uh, on the future land use map of the two thousand and nineteen master plan. Um, a table indicating the densities, primary and support uses and characteristics of each of the future. A table indicating the densities, primary and support uses and characteristics of each of the future land use, sorry, of the future land use classification. Has been provided in the memo and staff feels that the zone change or the rezoning request. Meets the intent of that future land use map and the policies and goals. Again, I won't harp on it anymore, but want to reiterate that staff has, does have that same concern about. The balance between residential, commercial, and industrial uses with this. Just to bring it again to your attention. The property is currently vacant and the proposed use is unknown. The total acreage of the parcel is 1.71 acres. Allowed uses in the MR zone district include a variety of residential uses by right and most of the commercial uses require a conditional use permit. The next step in the development process will be for the applicant to propose development. Pose a development for the property and based on that proposal, another public hearing may or may not be requested as indicated before. There may be a, a use by right proposed that would not require a public hearing and would be a staff or administrative process. While the parcel appears to be adequate to provide all required lot dimensions and zoning district. Sorry, lot dimensions of the zoning district and intended uses without a development plan, we are unable to know the property. How the property may develop or may be laid out. While we believe the parcel can support development standards through allowed uses, accesses, utilities, services, roadways, and setbacks. This will have to be demonstrated through the future application that's submitted in development. Section seven, three fifteen A of the Ridgway Municipal Code sets forth the required dimensional standards which have, which shall be met. For various uses within the zone district. The standards applicable to the MR zone district were provided in the memo as well. The site does not currently have any access points improved, though it could be accessed from a variety of roadways, including Railroad Street. Rid, River Park Drive or North Cora Street. However, all access standards shall be met and sta, streets shall have adequate capacity and design to handle the intended traffic. Additional improvements may be necessary when connecting access to the property from any of these streets to ensure it is safe for two-way traffic. From the site and future development and vicinity. But again, something that we'll have to want to. Make both the council and the applicant aware of that will be evaluated through future processes. There are utilities available in the adjacent to this property and we feel that there's adequate capacity to serve this property. The planning commission held a public hearing on August thirty first, twenty twenty-one to consider the app, this application. In that hearing, we did have some public testimony. So while I'm not going to. Speak verbatim, I do want to just give a general summary of, of the topics that were discussed. So there were some concerns brought up about the density of the residential area, parking and access to the subdivision. There was. It, it was brought up and discussed that the residential uses. Adjacent to it in the neighborhood are lower density residential than what would be allowed in the MR zone. There were safety concerns and related to traffic increases. And the, the. Concerns with North Cora Street extending or North Cora Street extending to the north into the existing cul-de-sac. There were concerns of increased traffic on North Cora Street and onto Escalante Circle. There's a need for. For residential lots in town as opposed to industrial lots. Or commercial lots. There were some concerns with street parking as well as the increased building height that would be allowed by the proposed zone district as opposed to the current zone. So following public hearing and discussion, the planning commission recommended approval of the town council, to the town council. Of the rezoning for this property with no conditions. Therefore, consistent with that, staff would recommend that. Town council approve the request to rezone track D River Park Ridgway Business Park filing one. From I one Light Industrial one to MR mixed residential district. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and I believe the applicant is there to give a presentation as well.
Thanks, TJ.
Jack, anything to add?
Yeah. Uh, Jack Petrosali, Matt Warden, Marion Oliver, Ridgway, Colorado. I'm here representing Al Investments and Paul's family. We. Just want to make it more obvious that it appears on the map that this is not. This is only industrial. We feel like the industrial use is more of an impact to the residential neighborhood than. Than the residential use that we're requesting. Obviously, the. The residential uses what we would consider a down zone. I don't know that I've ever asked for a down zone before, like, but we're asking for one tonight. So we're requesting this to be zoned from industrial back to grid, back down to residential. This is not a general commercial track. There's a lot of talk around the town about general commercial being zoned into residential. And the impact of. Leaving less commercial out there. Again, this is an industrial track and we feel like the industrial use has a far greater impact than residential. And TJ had said that this track could be accessed from River Park Drive and Cora Street. I believe there is a plat note that says it's required to be accessed off of Cora Street. And I don't know the plat number off the top of my head, but I think as this. Uh, track matures through the processes that it will go through, that plat note will come out and. We can address the access then we don't at this time have any real issues, any need to access off of River Park Drive. The public spoke a little bit about the concern of Cora Street connecting up with Escalante Street. The, the right of way that there, I can see the. The plat, I guess. The, the Cora Street connecting up to Escalante Drive is a plat that right of, it's already existed. Exists in the town's ownership and we're not married to that. So we don't, we're not requiring that to happen. If there's a better solution, we would. Open to that and we would go through that process and step. Again, this is a request just to change the zoning so that we can. Feel confident that advancing the funds it'll take to bring it into the planning process and subdivision process. Yeah, so this, this is actually a right of way here that is dedicated to the town and we don't really. But we're not, we're also not married to it. I think the town might be married to it, but we'll just deal with that in the next step. Uh, again, this is just a zoning request. We're not. Asking to sub by the plaque and we think the use that we're proposing is a better use for the neighborhood. Better, by far better use for the community. We all know we need residential housing and this is within, inside the urban growth boundary. It's what we call an infill track. This one's recalled, which was. Requested in the master plan, not, it's not a, on the other side of Trail Town Road by Eagle Hill is, it's a logical track to. To develop with paved streets on two sides. So. I'm requesting an approval from the town council. I'm here to answer any questions.
Right, thanks, Jack. Anybody have any questions up front in the air council for Jack or for TJ?
Yeah, I do. Jack, I, I know there's no development plans yet and we haven't discussed the density issue, but. How many dwellings would you foresee offhand?
You know, we have a plan yet. It really depends on the right of way and I think there's going to be a lot of staff input again. We're not married to the. The street right of way and if we can turn that into, into parking and open space and we don't have a density that we're trying to achieve. And this could go, to be just transparent here, this could go. Low income housing and it could go high income patio homes if you go view the way. And there's a need for both of those. So I think it'll be the planning commission's charge to drive that train. We, we don't have.
Is the determination of use and adaisment up to the town?
The town owns it. Some of these.
So if we're not used as a street, it's up to the town with the finances.
Well, we could require it to be developed as part of the development. We could get it, that's, that's. You know, kind of a price and sell it to a developer that was not.
And they turn it into a green space.
Green space, a blockway, like there's. In number of things.
There is a, there is a, this is, there's a fifty foot drainage using the one tronch here and then.
You actually see it over there.
Sixty foot stream. So there's a lot of city property.
The dark wall, you can, you can see the big ditches they call it.
Yeah.
That dark, pretty eyes.
The dark strip on, on next to Railroad Street.
They should, they're subtracting, you know, the bridge net.
Yeah, it's the same bridge that goes into, to River Park and also into Parkside. It's the same creek, same image.
But it's a bridge that's from River Street. Oh, yeah, bridge that ditch somehow.
From Railroad Street, yes. Yeah. And Cora would have to say, just, just for information sake, the town.
This is already stuffed out and it's pretty obvious where this, where this needs to be. It would be, in my opinion, the state, if not Orion, Cora Street. We're not here to plot.
Yeah, exactly. We're not here to decide that. But we're just going to say, the town, the town's never. Given up a right of way and I don't think it's in our best interest to do so. There's all sorts of other potential options.
If we could use a parking, there's a lot of good things to use it for.
I see. The bigger question is just, you know, is this, is this rezoning request. Makes sense. Staff's given this recommendation to approve. The only, the only thing I would add. Is in response to what Jack said about, you know, this being a down zoning and being a more appropriate use next to residential. You know, it's important to remember that on two sides, it's already abutting other light industrial. So it's, it is an interesting. Parcel and that it's. It kind of bridges that. Honestly, I would hope that whatever development process happens with it, if, say, we approve this, is that there could be some sort of. Mixed use kind of thing that would happen. On the east and south edge of the parcel to sort of be a transition. But that's again, something considering. Another day.
Look, I mean, there's, there's also a sword on shadow of this property, so we have a good point range using sixty foot road and then about a hundred foot sword shadow that can't be developed. So it's a combination with a lot of city issues.
Well, that being said, there was in, we were asked to rezone another light industrial parcel not that long ago. And I stood here and I said, no, we will not. We only have so much industrial space in this town as we develop. So and light industrial is designed to serve as a transition for joining residential neighborhoods as per our code. So.
And we're, we're also looking at another request similar here at this one. That was recommending approval without conditions. Could we entertain a condition of requiring low density as part of this? Conditions are possible, yeah, I believe. Probably just need to look and roll on that.
But Terry, is the actual, is the actual question that we want low density? Cause I mean, honestly, if there's going to be residential development, it's. Its location would ask for high density. I wish we could demand mixed, truly mixed. Like, we don't have a zoning code to demand that.
The reason I bring that up, being a resident. Is that for every dwelling that we bring into this side of town, dealing with one, one and a half to two new cars that are piled up and trying to cross Ridgway on sixty-two. So traffic, not just local traffic, trying to get out of this community to me is making considerations. We've got all the residents of Lena Collins, I think that's thirty some. So figure sixty cars now in line, you know, not density. Dealing with that and more vehicles are going to pile up with our, with our, what do we call them? That may or may not be a solution. There's already a traffic issue coming out of this community.
There is, I mean, in other projects, Laura Street may become to my consternation somewhat.
The way you're concerned.
So no, but I, but I, what I'm saying though is for the town overall. Aside from sixty-two access, that is an ideal place if you're going to have residential development or it to be dense. I think if you have, for example, those very expensive patio homes and we lose industrial development for people who may be. Retired and not working, we're kind of hitting ourselves with a double whammy in this community. It's not homes for workers and it's not jobs. It seems like we're turning away light industrial property. To, to kind of the opposite in that.
Well, I, I would, given a vote, I would be voting against high density and that, just because it's myself, it's just as I remember that.
Well, you know, this is, they are requesting selling to a new zone that's come about since our last, that's what they call the mixed residential district. MR mixed residential district. Now, the problem is that that MR zone district doesn't probably have as much detail in its requirements that we might like in terms of. Acquiring that, that kind of excuse for target.
Right. I mean, it can just probably be single family detached dwellings, right, used by.
And. A lot of it, a lot of it kind of used that we're thinking would be nice there in commercial, but it's, is, is actually required, requires a kitchen use. So, so. That's, that's an issue. You know, I, we, I will say, sitting on planning commission, this came up last month, there were a lot of River Park residents there. Speaking out in favor of this because they don't want to see light industrial, light industrial residences. Just so you know.
I think in a lot of ways, light industrial may have less impact than single family homes. In terms of your traffic, in terms of, it is light industrial, we're not talking, you know, the darker green as you look down into the industrial part. So just, just things to, things to think about.
I'm also looking at this in the context of this issue about, which is similar to this, what we're talking about. But, but again, it's. Please, please, please resist the urge to, to do that because these things, these applications stand alone. Again, the arguments can be the same second.
And when I don't.
It's a different person with a different existing zone designation. So it is different, but and if the point is, it's not relevant to have that. Impact our discussion, decision on this request. All right. So let me open it up to public comment. Anybody either in the room or on Zoom? Yes.
Tim, yes, a girl on Kismes Street, so I'm right across the street from this. I was here with my neighbors before. And with what Jack's requesting, I do not, I am not opposed to anything at this time. I am concerned about access. He's mentioning Cora because me and my neighbors, we are concerned about River Park Drive. So it's appears everything so far, I am not opposed, but I am concerned as well he brought up. With the high density of its change, mixed use, thirty-one minutes, you know, break, whatever, that's awful high. And then also the height, three stories. Those are the residents, the residents just ignore the single story. So that's, that would be a concern with relevance with the height. But again, with once being requested, I cannot oppose it. Because it's, it's something that's valuable, real estate and it would be up to whatever they present to see what we go from there. But I do have reservations and I am right in the middle of it. So I appreciate all your concerns.
Thanks. And to be clear, you, you prefer it being developed as residential.
No, my preference would be lighted industry. That's why I even purchased this house because I knew I had underdeveloped a plan to east and south it. But it's industry and so whatever business is there, they're only going to operate so many hours out of date and not peace supply and no traffic. So I'm for industry. But I understand the need for housing and being surrounded by nice homes to ignore. It's, it is like a transition area. So being more residential, I do not oppose. I wouldn't have a problem. I prefer. I prefer the industry, but I'm not gonna.
That's good to know, thanks. Um, anybody else? In the room, anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? All right, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring you back up here. We thank you.
I'm, I have, I can't be for this because we can't require it to be mixed use or the highest. The highest use for town is as industrial, just because we don't, we don't have large amounts of that. We have an urban growth area in which residences can happen. We don't have a lot of more places to put industrial or light industrial to continue to create a vibrant mixed economy.
It's not the kind of spot it's going to go.
That's true.
Well, I would like to see, the problem is we don't have a zoning code to require mixed use development. And so as our code says right now, Kevin, that's the best option. I would like to see required, like, a mixed use that requires a mixed use, but we don't have that.
Right, so that's, that was my thing too with, um, you know, mixed residential use, it's a conditional use for. Um, putting in retail or restaurants or, you know, something like that. But it's not a requirement, they could just put on housing and stuff, you know. If it, if it had to have like a certain percentage of a mixture or something like that.
Is it possible that a development proposal could come forward and a rezon could happen in conjunction with the plan? Where, where, the answer now is no. But bring us a plan that's mixed and then we can talk about it.
I'm actually. I move for that. Um, Bo, can I get you to weigh in on something, um, just because it was brought up earlier? Um, in a rezoning request, I was, um, I don't think we can actually put conditions on a rezoning request, is that correct?
Generally, that's correct, it's, it's just kind of a, an, an up or down and then development. Application would be reviewed in, um, separate from that.
Based on is the underlying zone, right?
Right.
That's what I'm sticking.
Thank you. Um, Jack, if we tied, if we tied the, the decision on this zoning request to a development plan, does that limit your ability? Your usability to generate a development plan, is it too much uncertainty to go forward with it?
We wanted to get the zone in place before we did it.
That's ideal, but could they say it's only gonna tie together?
Yeah, see, I, I have to say, I, um. And that I told my, argued in planning commission that it made more sense to do the rezoning concert with the development.
And, and I have different feelings on both of them, we'll get to that one, but in this one, I really think it, it is the transition, it is the, it is that buffer zone.
No, this is not the last time you're gonna see the property. You're good to have those feelings.
Unless, unless it involves single family homes, at which point that is a use by right and it doesn't come back to us. Right. And I don't get a say.
I think there probably would be some say because the, because the parcel was so undeveloped and it would require.
Subdivision.
Some subdivision procedure to give it access and stuff like that, so. That, just to point out, that does give us a little more control. But not.
But not over if it's, it's not whether it's four homes or thirty-one, you know, even like, it just doesn't. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good debate, um.
The other issue with density, this is something I'll bring up later, not today, is carbon footprint. For our town, we have master plan, um, goals for our carbon footprint for environmental protection. High density means higher carbon footprint per square foot. And that's counter to some of the goals in the master plan, whether that's something you address.
But that's, that's not always true. We, if we're like, if we're, if we're saying we're gonna have X number of, say, water taps and then we're tapped out, higher density in that parcel. Where you can walk to the high school and you can walk downtown and you can walk to Mount, I mean, that's better.
It's more complicated than just saying higher, higher.
Well, our, well, our shit.
Dwellings that are, but if the choice is a high, a high density on this parcel and sprawl into other parcels, that could be better.
Yeah, I think, I think it's more complicated.
Like, if you were doing low density, it doesn't mean that the house is gonna be small and have a smaller carbon footprint than like duplexes or something like that.
Carbon footprint's usually proportional to the number of people.
I, I think, I think the takeaway on this discussion is it is way more complicated than high density equals carbon bad.
Yeah, I mean, and it's probably not something we need to go too much further into in this particular. Item. So, um. I think I'm hearing, uh. I'm hearing rumblings of a, of a motion to deny, um. Does anyone feel otherwise, or is somebody wanting to make a motion?
I move to deny the reasoning to this parcel, let's track our parcels, tract of deed of the River Park. Ridgeway Business Park filing one. Again.
All right, um. Bo, help me out here, um, we've got a motion, a second, do we need criteria to be stated in the motion?
Be helpful, um, one, just to give direction to the applicant. Um, and two, to show that, you know, somewhat of the reasoning behind the thought process, but wouldn't say it's mandatory.
Um, to deny the rezon. Based on. Preserving the, the uses in industrial, so being based on our current code. Um, and council would be willing to entertain a rezon in conjunction with a development proposal.
Too much too much.
Um, that in development, or with a development proposal that includes mixed use. And appropriate.
Do you want to amend your?
Oh, I said, I agree with you on that.
No, that's, so you're, you're second.
Second.
You, you will amend your second.
Yes, I will amend my second to best amendments to her.
Does that, is that clear, Pam? As clear as mud?
Got it?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, TJ, your hand up?
Yeah, I did, I just, I wanted to maybe just interject a little bit, uh. Maybe make the motion a little bit clearer that there are criteria that, uh, should be considered in, in seven, three, twenty-two A. And one of them, uh, one, B. Um. Two, basically says that in order to change the zoning, you need to find that the existing zoning is erroneous. So you, it, it might be simpler to just say that that was not found. And therefore you can't meet the standards of, of considering the, uh, rezoning.
Seeing that that's.
So am I allowed to, to give my reason that I gave, because I think that's the most honest?
But I think, yes, it's, it's.
Okay.
To have that, but, uh, I just thought I'd throw it and tie it back to a condition if, if, so. Um. Do you mind, Mayor?
No, go ahead.
So, I, I tend to agree a little bit here with TJ, um, it's hard because. The, the motion frankly is a little bit unwieldy, um. Maybe it would be best if there's a, a motion to design the rezon based on, uh, you know, the criteria that TJ just provided. And then subsequent to that, if you wanted to provide some, outside of the motion, some additional direction to the applicant, you could certainly do that.
Yeah, actually, so actually, I think under that same seven, three, twenty-two, I think actually, the argument would be that. Conditions in the area affected or adjacent areas have not changed, therefore the rezoning cannot go through. Um, I think that better describes what my argument was. But the conditions are still such that industrial is the appropriate zoning for that property.
So your criteria.
So my criteria falls under seven dash three, twenty-two. A dash B dash three.
A one, B.
A one, B three, yeah.
And then instead, conditions in the area affected or adjacent areas have not changed, material, so.
Yeah, I think that accurately describes what I was fighting for.
Yes, I would still second that.
Thank you.
Is that clear enough, Bo?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Um, thanks for that clarification, um, is there any other discussion? Uh, we'll call votes, so excuse me, is the direction that you provide? The portion of the amendment that you were talking about?
Yeah, and I think if a, bringing us a plan could prove that the conditions in the area have changed.
I think, I think.
Or that it would be.
You could argue that we, why, that we've given directions or discussion we just had.
Yes, in fact, that a new plan would probably fall under one of this, where it says, or I, where it says the amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan. Where we get a development plan that would allow us to look at that person a different way.
Cause I'd like to look at the light industrial issue in context.
Rest of town is, that's a spot, that's a separate issue from the discussion. Right? Um, okay, so, uh, we'll call votes.
Councilmember's back.
Aye.
You overruled me to deny.
Grahamley.
Aye.
Grambley.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Mayor pro, Tim Meyer.
And Stain.
Okay, uh, motion passes with, uh. Five in favor of one extension, and just so you young folks know, the mayor doesn't get to vote unless there's a tie, so that's fine with the board. It's, um, so the motion carries, the zoning request is denied. That takes us to item number seven. And I also want to say thank you guys for hanging in and, like, we didn't know how long this is gonna take, but you're getting some lessons out of this, aren't you?
Anyone that wanna reconsider?
Give them that shot. Uh, okay, this takes us to item number seven of the zoning request, similar to the previous one, but slightly different circumstances and definitely different parcel. This is, uh, first to rezon portion of Outlot three slash C from FD Future Development to MR Mixed Residential. Legal is Outlot P slash P, P three slash C, River Park Ridgeway Business Park filing one. Uh, address is not applicable, general location is on South of Railroad Street, West of Cora. Uh, zone district FD Future Development, current is vacant, applicant is Ridgeway Light Industrial, owner is Glen Fox, TJ?
Thanks, and thank you, Mayor, um, so you get to hear me again, uh. So, as mentioned, this is another rezoning request, um. This parcel, Outlot PC three, has two zoning districts tied to it. It's, the current zoning districts are FD Future Development and, uh, I one, Light Industrial one. Uh, the request is to change the portion that is FD Future Development to MR Mixed Residential. And, uh, keep the, uh, portion of the property or this parcel that is zoned, Light Industrial, to remain Light Industrial at this time. Um, so it's a little bit convoluted, but there are two parcels or two zone districts on this parcel. Um, so, uh, see here, as, uh, mentioned, the parcel is located south of Ridgeway Street. Uh, it's Outlot P three C of the River Park Ridgeway Business Park, uh, filing one subdivision. The parcel is, or the lot is, is currently vacant with no ex, uh, no existing structures or improvements. Um, it's surrounded by, uh, business uses to the east, um, to the north are residential, um, homes. To the west, the prop, uh, the, the western portion of the property is zoned FD, while the eastern portion of the property is the portion that's zoned. Uh, Light Industrial. Let's see, I, so as I mentioned, the property does have two zoning districts, while the, uh. Municipal code is silent on whether or not, uh, this is allowed. Um, this is not an advisable situation, however, since the property currently has two zoning classifications, staff didn't see an imminent need to remedy it. Since the request is only to rezon the property. While staff is generally understanding of this request and is not requesting that the parcel be rezoned, uh, to one zoning district. A condition of approval that we'll get to in a few minutes is, um, that this be remedied through the subdivision process in conjunction with any future development application or request. Uh, again, the property and, uh, notice have been posted, um, by the town in accordance with Ridgeway Municipal Code's requirements. Uh, this, related to the master plan compliance or performance with the future land use map, this parcel has three land use classifications tied to it. Uh, within the two thousand nineteen master plan, the furthest northwest corner of the parcel is identified as single family neighborhoods. The middle portion of the property is identified as mixed neighborhoods and the strip furthest to the east is identified as employment. Uh, tables indicating the densities, primary and support uses and characteristics of each of these future land use classifications have been provided in the memo. And upon review and analysis, staff feels that the, uh, request, um, is consistent with the, the future land use map. Uh, so the property, as I mentioned, the property is currently vacant and the rezoning does not include a development plan or intended uses of the property. The total acreage of the entire property is, uh, including the FD and the I one zone district is nineteen point seven, oh, seven acres. Um, just a point of clarification, this was inaccurately presented in both, above, planning commission hearing and in the, the staff memo. As eighteen point five one acres, um, it, the correct acreage is nineteen point oh seven. Um, I don't think it's a material change in the presentation or consideration, but I wanted to, uh, just point that out. And then as a condition of the planning commission recommendation, um, the applicant was requested to provide a legal description of the two zone districts. Um, and simply for that exact reason, to understand the, the, uh, the, the, the magnitude of each and, and the areas of each. So, um, the applicant did submit those to the town and that, uh, legal description, uh, and exhibit map were provided to council. Uh, in the packet, the area of the proposed MR zone district is thirteen point three acres and the I one zone district contains the remaining five point seven seven acres. Uh, while the area appears to be adequate to provide all required land, uh, lot dimensions. Uh, dimensional standards of the zone district and of the intended uses, the actual acreage of the MR portion of the parcel. Must be determined in order to fully understand, uh, the area can support, um, development. Um, again, those will be determined through the subsequent phases of development process. Access to the site, uh, there, there are no current access points to the site, though it could be accessed from, uh, Railroad Street. Paul Drive and Roundabout Drive, uh, sorry, Roundhouse Drive. Um, additional improvements may be necessary when connecting the property to any of these future, uh, these street connections to ensure it is safe for two-way traffic. Uh, to and from the site, uh, based on the future development patterns. Also, uh, Laura Street is, uh, proposed to, uh, run north-south here, and I'm sure the applicant will talk more about that. Uh, in, in a little bit. Um. The property, uh, there, there are water and sewer utilities in the area of this parcel and, um, those utilities can be, and connections can be. Uh, made at future points, um, depending on the development pattern of the property. Uh, for future purposes, a utility plan will be needed to, uh, evaluate and understand the property's. Capacity for residential and commercial, uh, development, as well as the, the, uh, the most efficient and effective. Manner to lay out the utilities once we know what the development will be. Um, so again, the planning commission held a hearing, a public hearing on August thirty-first to consider the application. At the public hearing, two members of the public spoke in favor of the applicant's, uh, preliminary concepts of relocating Laura Street. And following the public hearing and discussion, the planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning, uh. request with two conditions, one being that the legal description of the proposed zone districts be provided. And since the applicant has submitted that and been, and provided that to town council as well, staff has amended the staff recommendation to be that we recommend that the, the town council approve the request to rezone Outlot P three C River Park Ridgway Business Park filing one from FD Future Development and I one Light Industrial one to R, sorry, MR Mixed Residential and I one Light Industrial one with the following condition. One, the property shall be subdivided pursuant to section seven four five of the Ridgway Municipal Code, so that no parcel has any more than one zone district classification prior to or concurrently with any future development application. So that's what I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I know the applicant's there to speak on this one as well.
Thanks TJ. Again, Jack Kip. Yeah. Jack, after seven five forty, Mayor Norwood, Ridgway, Colorado. This project, it's unusual because it's one piece of property that has two zones. We don't think of it that way, and I don't think the town thinks of it that way. It's cumbersome to deal with. So that's why TJ asked us to provide a legal description, and we're comfortable with his request to subdivide it further. So we don't get the zoning, there's really no reason to subdivide it. Our, our concern here is that we want to complete Laura Street, so this is more about Laura Street than is about zone from our standpoint. But this, go back to the zoning request, this is within walking distance of the high school and to the grammar school, it's within the Murphy Grove boundary. It's what we consider a filling property, currently has one major paved street. In the future, it'll have two major paved streets on the side of it. We think it's obviously an appropriate place for residential housing and mixed use that we're proposing. And that's why we requested it. We also feel like the FD zone stays in the zone, and it's, the FD is a, is zoned to hold it for a future rezone. And that's, that's what we really question. All similar comments was submitted on the other track. Has any questions? Questions for Jack? Or for TJ? Anybody open it up for a public comment? Anyone in the audience? Or again, come on up?
Tim Gessi, Portland Business Street, all I wanted to clarify, now what you're showing up there, the light green will say Light Industrial. The excuse will be what's the beige or the tan that's outlined in that triangle, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I have no opposition to that, because the southeast Light Industrial, so I'm an advocate.
Anyone else? I have a question, you got, Pablo's, he's raised the data. Jack, because you, you and I have been in other town council meetings where there's a discussion of the extension of Laura Street, and one of the challenges is, is wolf ownership. And so when you talk about, that's your role, is, are you going to speak about how to overcome that obstacle? Well, well, it isn't okay to speak that, I guess. So this is wolf here, and I don't know so many people like that, well, people who've been in town for a while understand as well. So we control Laura Street and here in the water, while both sides are unable to prove it. From here, we only have half of the proposed driveway, and it's also the same issue that Tyroide Foundation is dealing with on their track. So this is an issue that we're all going to be dealing with. You spoke with the Tyroide Foundation, we're in, in communication with them, and we're cooperating with them. And they're, they're experiencing the contact that we have had over that, had many requests. So we have approached the town by paving half of Laura Street, actually, roundly at times, and round streets, but we're open to whatever the town would like there. But we're also able to access it through Roundhouse, so we can skip that and not develop that property. Or we could access, there's another street there called Hall, and it could be shown on this map. So we have other access points, we don't need to do more, we would like to do more, we'd like to possibly relocate Laura, but that'll be the plating process that the zone. And then we look to, so here, Laura T-bones right in the parkside subdivision, this is very much a residential street. Laura's going to be more of an arterial life, so it'll be nice to have it put into green and so. That'll be conversation another day. Okay. Did that answer your question, Pat? Yeah. Okay. Anybody on Zoom have any public comment? No? Anybody else in the audience? All right, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring back a clear deliberation. And I, I feel the need to state at the planning commission hearing on this item, I argued pretty strongly to that, that it makes sense to do what we did for the last item, because in all my years with town government, we've never rezoned a parcel with FD zoned, the future development zone that is covering a lot of the undeveloped property in town. We've never rezoned one unless it was in concert with development. And to me, to do what Jack wants to do, or what Mr. Paul's, his partners want to do, it makes much more sense to, to subdivide and either come in with a mountain plan for the FD portion, or just simply create a lot line that separates the existing industrial zone from the FD and carves out the FD so it can develop to the future at some point. He can, in that process, he could still realign Green Street or Laura Two Green by creating a lot line that cuts into part of the property and rezones that. There's no, there's no, it might be, there's no better way to do it than to actually do these things in concert with that. So I don't need to say that I've already said that, planning commission and the planning commission in general felt that this was a piss. That's where we are.
I'm much more on the fence, I'm much more like, this seems okay. Like, I think any future development property we're going to have, where the location of where it's at, we're not going to wind up making it industrial, we're not going to wind up making it commercial. It's going to wind up being, it's going to wind up being residential of some kind. And mixed residential gives some options for different densities of exactly what it says mixed residential, so. I was, I'm willing to kind of, I mean, towards what TJ and staff are saying, where, yeah, it's unconventional to have two zoning pieces on a single property. But I think it aligns with what's going to happen this way. Full disclosure, I live on Laura Street, and the arterial component, like, hurts me to my soul, but it's going to happen, and I'm just off board with it. Well, because Laura Street's funny now, because it kind of did it, so it's the opposite of an arterial, so to go from that, but anyway, that's neither here nor there.
Well, the, the, the role of the, of, of.
Oh, I, I totally, I totally understand, and I'm, I'm not going to argue for my own personal. It's fine.
Okay, was the Tyroide Foundation proposal contingent upon Laura Street extending?
No, in fact, this would alleviate a lot of the concerns. Yeah, we have to evaluate this on its own merit, but there would be some pieces that would break out.
I think that since they're not looking to rezon the Light Industrial, I'm okay with this, because that was what the concern was with the previous one, but. I agree with Beth on that.
Makes sense?
Makes sense.
Anyone else? Maintain, one of this satisfied my issue with the law. Technically, when you're not in my mind, it would. You're not supposed to say that. Okay, well, somebody want to make a motion?
Not how it works either. I move to approve the request to rezone Outlot P three slash C River Park Ridgway Business Park filing one from FD Future Development and I one Light Industrial to MR Mixed Residential and I one Light Industrial with the condition as outlined in the staff report.
All right, motions made and seconded, any other discussion? We'll call votes.
Councilmembers back.
Aye.
Brawley.
Aye.
Grambley.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Meyer.
Aye.
All right, that's the unanimous, there you go, Jack. So, understood, you want to have sort of a lot before you, you talk. It only takes effect, is that what we're thinking here, TJ? So here's only an effect, and I'll bring in subdivision plan. What's the process you want to do? I think your rezoning request was good. A good question, TJ, whether just.
Just as prior to or concurrently with any development application.
Yeah, well, thank you. You're welcome. All right, that takes us to item evolved and ready. Youth Advisory Council interviews. I'll let Preston lead the way on this. I want to say again that I'm so thrilled that we, that this is our second year of Youth Advisory Council. I've worked on this for a long time, I just never was able to get it done, and, and I have to give huge kudos to Preston for getting it done, and came on board as town manager in twenty twenty. The great first year, and forward to our second year with you guys, so Preston, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thanks everyone for being patient. So this is, these are the interviews for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Youth Advisory Council. Through the month of September, we, the town solicited applications for membership and, and all, and town received ten applications, and I think everyone's here, maybe not Caleb O'Lane, I think she's on Zoom. But the applicants are, if I butcher your name, I apologize, just let me know. Cooper, Ader, Anna Archie, Caleb O'Lane, Maisie Gordon, Isabella Jonda, Jillian Jordan, Indigo Croy, River Randolph, Alenny Wallen, and Caitlin Winkleman. So those are the applicants that are, I think, all before you this evening. Council, you all have opportunity to ask, you know, questions you, you see fit. I encourage you all to, to keep it to five minutes or less, and as uniform as possible, as you ask questions of each individual applicant. The order is organized alphabetically, so we'll start, or by alphabetically by last name, so we'll start with Cooper, and then with Caitlin. And I talked about the, the time constraints of the interviews, you all will have a chance to deliberate a little bit, decide how to move forward with the appointments. Does that all make sense?
Yeah, so you all got the packet with everybody's application in it, hoping you got a chance to read those. Starting with Cooper. Anybody have any questions?
Should I go up there or just here?
Yeah, come on, I'll tell you how to do it. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Red Heron, five eight nine nine. You do listen.
Any questions?
This is tough, I mean, I think it's pretty exciting when there's ten applicants for five positions to begin with, and it's, you know, make a choice.
Preston and I have talked about the donation. Custom process, we can, we can do this here, but wait and discuss that.
Can you just give us like your quick elevator pitch on why you should be on the Youth Council?
Yeah, I, I really like the idea of a Youth Council, I know a lot of time we're overlooked, and you don't have a say or, or even just a position. So I really like the idea of it. I also want to be, be a part of this council, just, just because I want to have my voice out there. I want to make sure I can be a part of a collective decision and feel, feel good about that, feel like I helped out the town. And then also just like having my, my foot in, in local government. I think it's super cool to, to see just like how everything goes down here. I didn't realize, and I think it would be cool to have some experience in that realm, just because I might want to go down that way career-wise, or, or maybe not, who's, I'll find out.
Sounds like every single woman is okay. That's awesome. That's, that's sort of a good question, we can just let anybody. Stay on it, did you have any other questions? I think that's good enough, you did a great package here. Thanks for.
Yes.
I have a good question I'm going to ask everybody.
Go ahead.
If you had one thing you wanted to try to achieve on the Youth Advisory Council?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, I think, like you mentioned earlier, carbon footprint is a super big issue in today's modern world. I know Ridgway is pretty green now, but if we can move forward, possibly even just trying to think, like solar panels, just like being acquired, or, or even just thinking towards that direction.
It's great, thanks.
I know, I was going to suck up the Terry.
Hi, everyone, I'm Anna Archie, five ninety Sabata Drive. And I was part of the council last year, so this is my real application.
One, you know, she's the one, I'm turning out. What did you find most from last year?
Um, we ran that big event at the high school to, with the installing car chargers with Samuel Power, and it was like one of the coolest things I've ever done.
Awesome.
Like, I've never gotten to run the behind the scenes of something like that, and it just felt like being a part of something bigger, you know, it was just a great feeling.
Cool.
Yeah.
And you want to do it again?
Yes. And we have double the amount of applicants as last year.
It's a good.
Yeah, and I know there was a couple more who were on the fence, so.
So what would your one initiative be?
Um, like, just being here tonight, I think it'd be really cool if we could pull the student panel in this, where like people can address like what they want to see in the community, and we can try and like bring it in. Yeah, I was just thinking about that, the whole time I was watching this, I was like, I think it would be cool to be on that side.
Sometimes it is.
Trustful, I don't know how you guys can notice people. Yeah, I was like, that has to be so hard.
Yep, very interesting, it was a good night for you guys to be here, to see some of the kinds of. Great meeting, yeah.
Yes, I know, and I understood so much more than I did last year, than this year.
That's a good sign. It's a great sign. Okay.
Yes, thank you, guys.
So Caleb, Caleb O'Lane's next, she's on Zoom.
Caleb, you on Zoom?
Um, yes, hi, I'm here on Zoom.
Welcome.
Thank you, so I'm Caleb O'Lane, two eleven South Mary Street.
All right, any questions for Caleb?
Yeah, Caleb, give us your elevator pitch and why you should be on the Youth Advisory Council.
So I love the idea of the council, like Cooper was saying, it's such a cool idea that youth can finally be represented and have a voice. And I think that being on is something that's so important. I'm sorry, I'm totally, I'm very nervous right now, can you please repeat your question?
All I ask is, give us essentially the why you should be on the Youth Advisory Council.
Oh, yes, thank you for repeating.
No problem.
Um, I think I could bring a lot to the council, I love this community, I love the people in the community, and I would love to help bring awareness to all the issues that aren't seen so much, like mental health awareness.
Great, awesome. Terry, you want to ask your question?
Yeah, so what I've asked everybody is, what would be your primary initiative? Encouraging council to get behind.
So like I just said, I think that I would want to focus most on mental health issues within community of students and even adults, because I think that although Ridgway is such a great place, it tends to create a bubble that needs addressing, because it is kind of detrimental to mental health, and I don't think that's something that has enough awareness brought to it.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Caleb.
Thank you.
Mesa brings us to Maisy Gordon.
Hey, guys.
Hi, Maisy.
Should I just do the same? I'm Maisy Gordon, I'm not going to say my address then.
That's fine.
It's adorable. Basically, I just kind of want to be on the council because I feel like I have a lot of strong issue, or strong opinions kind of and want to just be able, in the, just to be able to share like what I think and kind of have a voice and make changes. Because I feel like, oh, there's a lot of kids and a lot of people that I know that have issues that they want to talk about and want to make changes but there's no way that they can do it because we don't really have anything like this. And you guys started it last year, so there's not really, there hasn't ever been a way for us to do this thing. So I'm just really interested in kind of sharing my viewpoint, helping people out.
Great.
Anything, one champion issue?
Um, I mean mostly just, kind of like I said, sort of what Anna said too, just making, I mean making a place for people to, like people around the community and mostly students and kids to share their feelings and just giving people a voice that don't usually have one.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Isabella Jonda.
Hi.
Did I say that right?
It's Janda.
Janda.
Yeah. Um, Isabella Janda, I don't, I'm in Ridgeway, so I am also not going to say my address.
That's fine.
Um. What was the first question?
There really wasn't one.
It's just your, your pitch of why you should be on.
Yeah.
Um, I would love to just be more involved in the community and I was a student here in high school, so I want to like leave a footprint in Ridgeway before I leave and just make an impact here and have a voice and just like help out while I can.
Terry's got his, he has a question.
Particular, single focal point?
Um, well, I would like to, if I was on the council, I would like to focus on the youth part. In Ridgeway, there's just like a lot of peer pressure towards the kids and I feel like I would like to create like a group that could be like the peer leaders and stuff, that could help like the kids that are new feel welcomed and encouraged to be themselves and not be peer pressured into things that are happening in high school.
Great. Great, thanks, you're welcome. Takes us to Gillian.
Hi, I'm on Zoom here.
Welcome.
Okay, um, and then I go by my middle name, Annika, just for the future.
Okay, let's say it again.
Annika, it's N-I-K-A-H, yeah. Um, so I would love to be a part of the council because I think it's a really cool thing to bring up, to have the kids as part of what's influencing our town. Um, and also just, I would love to see the process of how these decisions are made and why they're made. I know being more involved in what happens in our town more recently, you wonder why and I think this would give me the opportunity to understand more of that. And, and I think I could bring good opinions to what is being discussed here.
Do you have a single passionate issue that you champion as part of the advisory council?
Um, yeah, I, I wrote in my application a lot about the environment, but I'm also concerned about, not concerned, but want to be more involved with the youth in Ridgeway because I feel with social media and technology becoming more of a prominent thing in their life younger, I think it's important to hone in on the mental health as well as the, what they're being given along with technology and responsibility with it at a younger age. So I feel like being more involved with them and putting it on the mental health and focusing on them would be a good, good idea to do.
Thank you, great. Thanks, Annika.
Thank you.
Just, you go. I can never remember, do you guys go by Christ or Crowe?
It's Christ. But it's other than like.
Both were, right? We've seen you a lot.
Yes. I'm Indigo Kreis, you might know, I'm also not pressing my address, I also live out of town, so.
All good.
I mean, um, you, some of you probably have seen me before, I was here a lot with Carry On program, passing the bag then. And the reason I want to be on the Youth Advisory Council is just to see what goes on behind the scenes at the town. I don't know about a lot of the issues that are going on at our town. And just today, like, just in this meeting, I learned about so much that I would have had no idea. And I think it's really important for students and just kids to know about that and have a voice in what happens, well, not necessarily that kind of stuff. Yeah, so I think it's really important to be, to be an advocate for other kids and, as well as my own opinions. And one, one of my goals or things that I want to do when, if I'm on the council is, well, one, just continuing with maybe passing, well not, yeah, well, passing another ordinance that may further is the ban on plastics in Ridgeway. So straws, styrofoam containers, other things that will help the environment and just overall help Ridge and other places. I also think we need to have some programs that help more students and learn about what goes on in town and how they can help and projects that we can help with and volunteer.
Good. And I don't know if you know, but actually this, this year the state finally passed the plastics building that could fight for years in the styrofoam ban. We'll go and affect something on 23, it's a little ways off, but, um, we, and we, we managed to get the ability to have a government's specific bans on specific.
No, it's.
And a lot of it's due to you guys, so thank you. All right. Next is River.
Hello, I am River Randolph, I live at 725 Sabata Drive. And I've moved here recently, past two years, once my dad got the principal job at school. I've noticed some things about the community that I would like, like, for instance, I would like to see a dog park that was built so that, you know, after school, after work, you can go take your dog there and they can just play with other dogs because even though there was like this meetup with dogs that meet up like 8:00 AM, I can't take my dog there because I'm at school and, you know. Yeah, and I feel like I would fit on this bit here because I really like being involved with the community, immunity, because it just makes me feel, I don't know, like I'm in control and I can help out others if they have any questions or they need help. I am able to be there for them.
Sure, thanks, any other questions? All right, thanks for. All right, Lenny.
Hi, my name's Lenny Wallen. Um, I want to join the council to be a voice for the youth, similar to what a lot of the other applicants have said, but I've lived in Ridgeway my whole life and I know a lot of them have, so even though we're like students and kids, that doesn't really seem like we care. Um, I know I care a lot about my town and I think if there's a student representative, more students and youth would feel more comfortable to come to us with our issues. And I'd like to be a voice to help fix those and bring them up to the community. And then I also was part of Carry On and I'm currently part of the Ridgeway High School Environment Circle Club. So the environment's something I'm really passionate about, so I'd really like to further Ridgeway more eco-friendly, we installed those electric chargers and one thing for me is by my senior year to make them solar powered. So I'd really like to do that, just continue with all the things in plastics and harmful materials.
Great, thanks. Last but not least. Caitlin.
Hi, you probably haven't seen me before and that's especially why I want to be on the council is because I have been involved with my community, I can kind of see what happens around the town, but I never really see the internet working. So I'm kind of trying to just take a part in it. Um, and then I also kind of struggle with like voicing my opinion, so I'm trying to work on that, like stepping out of the box and applying for this. Um, one of the issues, I collect back of Annie and Caleb on mental health problems. So just being in a small town, you don't have a big effect on yourself. Um, and I think something like source and strength, but with more like student input uh, because we kind of experience it firsthand and we have good ideas on that.
Great, thanks. Great, brought by candidates. And I, I'd like to bring up with, so Preston and I talked about which is, although the existing resolution and attachment pay lays out structure and numbers, Preston and I talked about maybe editing the membership to be, to read that composed of five to 10 high school students and allow all tenants to be on this year's. I was going to offer that amendment, so.
Well, yeah, I think if we get more than 10, we're going to have to suck it up and make the decision.
That's why I was suggesting.
But I think 10 is, yeah.
10's a good number, maybe, actually for boards like this, it's often a good idea that that was an odd number. I don't know that that's essential, especially the more numbers you have, the less like you can tie. Um, and that's the reason to have an odd number. But if everybody was up for that, I'd like to suggest that we, we do that. And Preston, tell me what you think as far as procedure to do that goes, but.
I, I think it's fine, or with pointing however many folks you want to point to the, any, and at a, at a later time, we can, we have the direction to prepare a resolution amending the authority of procedures. With what you said, five to 10 membership and you can massage that a little bit more.
Yeah, and basically that leaves us flexible in the future years if it's left out.
So I have a question to the prospective council people. Well, if you were behind here, would you agree that this is what we're talking about?
I feel like it's like, maybe I would, but I think that, would you like just keep doing this every year when like 11 kids show up?
No, that's what I just told John, I'm like, you, you can't, there's a point where you don't function.
Yeah, no, I, I, we wouldn't, I don't think we'd keep increasing that. I really doubt, although your, your point's a good one. But I mean, I just think this is a great group of kids that I think you all have stated very well your intentions and desires and we just, Preston and I talked about how we just say no to any of you, so.
Do you all get along?
Actually, I don't care if they all get along, Terry. Yeah, confidence, be able to speak up and voice your opinion and especially in a large group where there might be more, more budding heads. I'm, I'm laughing at myself, but I'll laugh at you.
You know, one, one thing, it's not hard this per se, but one thing I think is interesting to see, because you guys have expressed your appreciation for what you saw tonight, it'd be great, it's not a requirement of your participation, is to show up at some of the council meetings to really get a feel for this background, or only on Zoom was a lot easier, it's a little bit more difficult personally.
I mean, you may be able to draw straws and not all be here, but if one of you take turns, like, and then kind of see it, but it should be like one time during the school year.
Well, and honestly, I think my dream, my, my vision for this was that you guys would meet in your, your regular YAC meetings and discuss issues and, and eventually come up with, with ideas and proposals and things that you want presented to, to us as things to take action on. And you guys could come as a group to do that or designate individuals. Each time, but do that. I also like the idea of giving you guys a separate opportunity to sit on the side of the table as the youth council and invite the public to come and, and talk to you guys and pick your brains. I think that's a little tool.
I'm so excited. I think we have to do it.
Um, so what's the feeling of the council here, to the?
My move, we appoint all of our excellently qualified applicants to the Ridgeway Youth Advisory Council for 2021, 2022.
Right.
Second.
We gave that to you, Russ, all right, motion made, seconded.
If I can just say one quick thing, I think it's awesome, there was a reoccurring theme with each of you that you had the question of wondering why things were the way they were, or why decisions are made and you all showed up to figure that out, and so that goes a long way, that's awesome, so. Kudos to you.
Yeah, kudos, definitely. All right, roll call vote please.
Council members back.
I.
Rowley.
I.
Bramley.
I.
Bacon. I. Skyler.
I.
Mayor Per Tammeyer.
Hi.
All right, I'd vote I too if I could, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for sitting through all that, you got a little baptism by fire. Assume you would have said something to anybody on Zoom, wanted to weigh in or ask questions.
Yeah.
Um, I suggest we take a five minute. Maggie's up there, high five. Five minute break.
I was like, I'm sorry. Can you imagine when I like my kids? Actually, you're out. I do all of them.
Oh, I see.
I mean, I'm the only one.
She's in a B class.
No. Yeah, well, this issue is seniors, they refer to, they refer to them as other by class because they all came in the same year. So they're the first group that I've ever got to see go through all four years of high school. Um, but we were at the, we were, well, no, I'm just late. Um, we were at the space decree like kickoff and the guy from Calm and Creative Industries comes over to me, still has a bottle of champagne in his hand from the toast, and he's like, how do you know her? Because I'm just like standing there watching River dance like this. Like I am just like, and he's like, I was like, oh, she's my student, I've taught her four years, like, she's just amazing. It's like, I can tell you're really proud of her, I was like, oh. That's, that's who I am now.
Oh, Mars degree, so. That's right, so, Mars adult, Mars adult, yeah, cameo.
Oh, that's right, you did.
I missed. Incredibly.
That was very. That was very.
I actually thought this. Yeah, somebody's gotta do it.
Well, I mean. Increase the temperature.
You and you and the kids, you just want to know what's up. Yeah.
Is is everybody in council now that you've actually had a box?
Oh, no.
What?
I did. It's COVID now. Forget about it. I had no idea. I'm sure they're all.
Blood overflowing from about a year and three quarters. Never checked that box.
I haven't checked it since COVID happened.
And a lot of that comes.
Can I ask, I guess the postal service can see and all stock failings. No, I'm like. Actually, Anna reminded me further that she was in turn running. Um what directly we did on Monday. She said kind of the same thing. It would be really cool to be the one involved on the back end, probably the things that you've always gone to and see. I didn't know that. I did once. Oh, I was just going to grab my napkin, but thank you.
All your email newsletters.
Same thing is getting emailed.
All right, so we are done with our break. Back at it, this takes us to policy matters. Number nine, consideration of request by Striker and Company Incorporated to close a half block of Laura Street to Clint Street in the alley located at half plate between Clint and Charles.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And we have Mark Klutz on the line. Thanks, Mark. We're hanging in there. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to you in a second with mention this to you all at the last meeting. Um Striker's requesting a temporary closure of North Laura Street or of Clint Street to the alley uh for a period of three months, I think the letter says, Mark. Uh they've cited safety reasons as the motivation for the requested closure. Um they've prepared a traffic control plan to implement uh if you all decide to to approve the closure. So with that, Mark, do you have anything to add?
Uh no, not at this time unless there's questions for us.
I'll start with just like so if this is approved, would this mean that you guys would use a different route to deliver materials to the site? Or would this help you deliver materials to the site?
It would help us deliver the materials to the site, sir. We'd come straight down Laura right into the site. Um we'd actually fence across Laura Street at the corner of Clinton and change it from one way as it is currently to shutting off access. We'd have a fence we could open up, bring in, for example, our steel trucks when we start receiving those here in a few weeks um for erection. Uh that is what we do. It would stop us from coming down the dirt roads. We'd also be able to come in and out on Laura Street, open gates to do so.
Gotcha. Yeah, I'd say um well, I hate to think about closing that for three months. I think it probably makes good sense, especially if it can literally help you um do less circling around on some of the other side streets than we've been doing because we certainly.
It it will. It will, sir. It'll help us reduce it. It won't eliminate it, but it'll help us reduce it. Um especially, you know, currently right now, we do have a one-way. We have it signed. Um we, most of the traffic we do get on Laura Street right now, that's not construction, is actually going um opposite of the posted direction, which causes safety issues. Um you know, as we start bringing in steel trucks here shortly and concrete to do um the concrete slabs, elevated slabs, the, you know, it's it's gonna be tight as it already is. Um we've had construction personnel essentially parking those couple off-street parking spots there um to help reduce congestion is 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 um odd as that sounds, because when other people have parked there, if they park wide, they park narrow, a a wide, you know, dump truck, ten-wheel or something like that. It has a hard time getting in there and getting through there. Um you know, especially if we have a concrete truck coming in, things of that nature. Um it does make it difficult. In addition to you, in addition to, you know, the the wanting to shut this down for for three months, either way, we will be shutting Laura Street down. It'll be intermittent if we don't because of uh the underground of uh San Miguel power lines that we have to take across Laura Street. Um we have to underground those. And that'll take uh roughly two and a half to three weeks to do that, just that portion alone. We'll be closing it down to put a manhole in the middle of Laura Street to tie in our sewer. So we'd have intermittent shutdowns um already. And so I think by by doing a a temporary one and just closing it down, it'll create less confusion versus intermittent shutdowns.
Gotcha.
So the alley on the north side of the project is going to remain closed. Will the alley on the east side also remain closed?
Uh no, it will not remain closed. We're working through the finishing up the storm sewer. We have a few things that Preston is aware of that we're working out with Joanne Fagan. As far as design on the storm system, that's what we got that has the the east end of the alley closed. As soon as that's wrapped up, that'll reopen.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Does this closure affect the uh access to the driveway for that uh garage on the northwest corner of the Clinton and uh and Laura there?
No, sir. We plan on, we plan on adjusting the fence as it comes across Laura to provide them access.
Okay, okay, good.
You're talking about the carriage house up behind the brick house?
Yeah, yeah.
No, we've tried to keep that in mind. Um we we we've tried to stay accommodating to that this entire time, so.
Great. Other questions from council? I imagine there's some questions on Zoom. I don't see anybody on Zoom. On for this item?
Curious about best take on it.
I'm not gonna throw a fit for my own personal needs.
Or just your perspective.
I mean, I'm already going around one way anyway. Like, I'm already going either down to Cora or up to Mary to go back out to the highway. Um so really, at this point, it's nice to know to come down the road directly. Um but it's not, it's not the end of the world.
Well, and I don't have to say anything we can do to help these guys be more efficient in their work and get the project done sooner is is a good thing too, so um.
Yeah, like it it it's a, it's an inconvenience, but it's really not anymore of an inconvenience than we have.
I think it can reduce some of the impact that we've seen for the public that's that's huge, so.
Yeah, well, doesn't change Preston's route to work.
Uh Joanne, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm a little concerned about giving the outlet. They haven't provided the solution, so.
Okay. Okay, but you guys are working on that.
We're working on it.
Well, as far as this request goes, I think we're okay with it, from what I'm hearing. Do you require a motion or anything?
Yeah, I think a motion would be great. Uh a motion authorized the 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 clo- to request a closure.
So I'll move to requests to formally request the temporary closure of Laura Street for three months.
Secondly, approve the request. You're not, you're not requesting it, you're approving their request. Sorry, I'm just being being clear.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay, uh motion made by Russ, seconded by Terry. Any other discussion? Oh, favor? I mean, sorry, vote, vote.
Council member Beck.
Aye.
Riley.
I'm Brambley.
Aye.
Bacon. I'm Skylar.
Aye.
Mayor for Tammyer.
Aye.
So that's an interesting question. Now that we're back in person, do we need to continue doing the votes? If we've got anybody on Zoom, probably.
Yeah, that's quite a question.
Yeah, so I is if we have somebody on Zoom, I would suggest that we maintain the roll call. Otherwise, we're fine without it, so.
Good to know. Thanks. Um and thank you, Mark. Um keep up the good work.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful night.
You too. That takes us to item number uh sorry, item number ten, presentation of draft twenty twenty two fiscal budget. I believe this is just a formality state law requires that it be submitted in October, but take it away, Preston.
But let Pam take it.
Okay, take it away, Pam.
Um you're correct. This is a formality, the Colorado statute twenty-nine-one dash one oh five requires that the budget officers submit the post-budget to the governing body by October thirteenth. So that is why this budget is in draft form. You will be reviewing it numerous times over the next few months. Um but this is just to be the requirement. Any questions you have, I can answer now, or you can wait until we start our budget discussions.
So I'm guessing you you basically got some gun numbers in here that explain to us what the ones in yellow.
No, um the things that are in yellow are for me.
Okay.
That means that I need to look at maybe adjusting them.
Okay.
But what you do have here is you have your twenty twenty actual numbers through the audit that Pete presented this evening. Then you have uh the estimated year-end numbers. And I put in some of the twenty twenty-two numbers. But we still have things that we need to discuss with council, so there's still areas that are empty for twenty twenty-two.
Gotcha. Where else have comments or questions for Pam? Not simply just the emotion to uh accept the presentation.
Is it just introduce?
Or is it, does it even require a motion vote?
No, um I think we just got it in and introduced and you guys will move forward with your fun work sessions and getting towards getting it ratified and submitted to submitting it to the state by January.
Great, that makes sense. Thank you. This is just meeting a statutory requirement. Okay, anything else on the side? All right, thanks, Pam. It's great work as always. Item number eleven, resolution number twenty-one dash oh seven, amending the town of Ridgway Commercial Design Guidelines.
Uh yeah, I'm saying, thank you, Mayor. So this is the final step in the process to update the town's landscape regulations. Um uh we need to have you all consider amending the town of Ridgway Commercial Design Guidelines to reflect those recent code changes uh just last last meeting. Um the modifier, the proposed modifications to the guidelines are, I would say largely non-substantive and intended to make the language related to to uh landscaping more succinct than in line with again, those code changes enacted by that ordinance last month. So happy and answering questions.
I'm I'm seeing on um item number eight here that we said trees, we've taken out the thing that trees should be incorporated, provide parking lot shading. Did we specifically remove that or is it just not a requirement or what? I'm trying to, I don't remember completely eliminating that.
Oh, that question is.
Yeah, that might be uh I'll have to uh maybe ask TJ or Katie specifically on on why that was proposed. Uh Russ, you're saying you don't recall that being proposed as uh being eliminated?
Yeah, that that's correct. You know, I'm I'm not necessarily against it. I'm just trying to understand what the what the background for it is. And I I don't recall seeing this before, but maybe I have and just I'm getting old and.
I don't recall. Both uh Russ and I are on panel meetings, so we've a lot of spent a lot of time with this. And I don't remember, well, specifically, I don't think we talked much about how it was going to be incorporated into the uh design standards, so um I'm guessing that that's being struck just to kind of reflect the overall uh water-wise efforts that we're trying to do, otherwise known as earth-scaping. Um but I'm a little concerned that we remove that and we actually do want trees incorporated into our lands wherever possible. It's it's a should, it's not a shall. So I think um we might want to highlight that as a question for.
Being an highlight that, and again, these are, these are uh not code changes. These are just the commercial design guidelines that are referred to intended to help not only staff, but uh residents and contractors, developers. But I think you were on the right track, John. Uh the proposed modification would it's meant to be in line with with those code changes last month, but I apologize, I can't talk specifically to where in the code that would be in line with, but that makes sense.
And not that Ridgway's got a huge urban street or urban heat effect, but parking lots are places that shade is really awesome. Kind of wondering if it got struck because it doesn't really fit in me. It's almost an eleventh point and it just didn't make it back in as its own bullet or as its own number.
That's an interesting thought that very well.
Because it it doesn't really belong with baller or street lighting.
But it didn't make its its way anywhere else.
Right, I couldn't, I can't find it.
I would like to see the tree replaced with solar carpets.
Yes, sure.
All right, so um seems to me that all the other changes of the logic or the break, they were able to eliminate a lot of verbiage and just replace it with open to requirements in the in the code, so that's great. Any other comments or questions? Here again, I might say I recommend to I mean, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash oh seven amending the town of Ridgway Commercial Design Guidelines with the one condition that staff review item number eight, well, it's under section two commercial, just general commercial district B eight regarding trees recommended be incorporated in the parking lot shading. So somebody could just say so moved.
So moved.
You got beaten by Terry. Sorry, that's fine. You can say it.
No worries. All set.
Thank you. Motion made, seconded.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, just to be clear, the condition is uh for staff to just verify the the motivation for.
Yeah, and and check with, have have staff review that number, that changed number number eight and bring back a change that addresses trees and parking lots in some way because I think we still.
And and again, as a should versus a shall, right?
Right.
Right, okay.
I think it's worth noting. All right, uh do you even know the roll call?
Council member Beck.
Aye.
Riley.
I'm Brambley.
Aye.
Bacon. I'm Skylar.
Aye.
Mayor for Tammyer.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Preston. Honestly. All right, thank you, Pastor St. Thomas Lee. That takes us to item number 12, resolution number 21-08, adopting the National Incident Management System Concept of Emergency Planning by Command. Preston?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So Glenn Lloyd has requested the council consider adopting this resolution as the federal government has identified the National Incident Management System as the requisite emergency management system for all subdivisions. The county and the city adopted a similar resolution back in 2006, I think it was. So this is just a housekeeping item that Glenn has recommended for our bases.
No concerns with that.
It sounds like just something got missed, but 2006, something more than.
I move to adopt resolution 21-08, adopting the National Incident Management System Concept of Emergency Planning in Unified Command. So.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Beck.
Hi.
Perally.
Hi.
Brambley.
Hi.
Bacon.
Hi.
Skyler.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi.
St. Thomas Lee, thank you. Rest, or item number 13, review and ratification of voter support for Habitat Habitat for Humanity of the San Juan's Enterprise Zone Tax Credit Application. As you can see, this is a request was made to Preston and I from Habitat for Humanity. We went ahead and did the letter to ratify that with this name. Do you want to add anything to that, Preston?
That's it.
I move we ratify the older support for the using tax credit for Habitat for Humanity of the San Juan's. Bacon.
All right, um, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Perally.
Hi.
Brambley.
Hi.
Bacon.
Hi.
Skyler.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi.
All right, thank you, Pastor St. Thomas Lee. My long, I didn't, oh, let's see, we've got two, we've got two items, right?
Yeah, that's right. So one was the Creative Main Street Group membership changes. I'll go ahead and go, that's okay, is he there? Yep. So you all, as town council, serve as the governing body for the creative district and main street initiatives. Uh, and we provide you all with notification of changes in membership. Creative Main Street Group has received a resignation letter from Brenda Ratcliffe. Very, very bummed to see her leave the group. I think she's been around, I don't know her very well, to be honest with you, but I very certain she's been around a long time and she's been an asset to that group, so it's a big loss. Hillary Lukowicz is no longer going to be representing the chamber, uh, the Ridgeway Area Chamber of Commerce in this group as she's transitioned away from the chamber. She took a job with the Creative Tours Office recently, which is, which is great, but she will still serve on the group, which is good news. That said, Ashley Perkins, who's new staff for the chamber, is asked to serve in the capacity of the chamber. So we're asked to consider approving her as a new member.
And. She's getting involved in a lot of things. Yeah, so do we need a vote on this?
Yes, please. A so moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thanks, Russ. We don't need any other discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Perally.
Hi.
Brambley.
Hi.
Bacon.
Hi.
Skyler.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi.
Right, thank you, Pastor St. Thomas Lee. Um, what was the other one laid out?
The other one was discussion and direction related to Colorado opioid settlement and recovery funds, and Bo's gonna take that one. Unless he's in his pajamas. We can take it with the pajamas.
Not yet, but. No, I think we're making good time with what was on the agenda, so. So, um, the Colorado Attorney General's Office sent out, um, at the beginning of the month, October 4th, a series of letters to municipalities with respect to a proposed settlement agreement that's in place with respect to legal claims against Johnson &amp; Johnson, legal claims against AmerisourceBurgin, Cardinal Health, and McSick, McKesnan, uh, with respect to the opioid, um, lawsuits, class action lawsuits that have been brought forth by a number of states attorney general's office. The way that I understand this is going to work is, one, the state is trying to get, um, a number of MOUs in place so that they can hit a threshold of 95% to, uh, municipalities throughout the state are participating in this, which will allow for them to trigger the kind of incentive payments that are proposed with these opioid settlement claims with respect to the allocation of state resources locally. It will be a task force that's set up in accord with our seventh judicial district, so Yuray, San Miguel, Delta, Montrose, Gunnison, and Hinsdale Counties. There'll be a pool of funds that will be administered by, um, I think it will be through an IGA with a, with a board in place, and the local representative, I believe, is, is Carol Friedrich, who would be in a position to kind of answer any questions that we may have. At this point in time, we're just asking for consent from the council to enter into the MOU, which is due on our, about the 5th of November, and we would bring back the ratified document for full council approval at the November council meeting.
Thanks, Bo. Um, so we're looking for a motion tonight.
That would be great.
Okay, any questions for Bo on this?
So moved.
Okay.
One second.
Motion made, seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Perally.
Hi.
Brambley.
Hi.
Bacon.
Hi.
Skyler.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi.
Great, thank you, everybody. Thanks, Bo.
Thank you, counsel.
Um, that takes us to item number 14, under written and verbal reports. Notice of vacancy on the town of Ridgeway Planning Commission. A long time, Chair Doug Camry has given this notice that he's not going to see free appointment. His term ending on November 1st. Uh, so we're gonna have to, first of all, recognize his awesome years of service, but secondly, we're gonna have a vacancy. The good news is I've talked to, uh, actually our newest, um, member of the planning commission, Michelle Montague, who is interested in being chair, so when that by the rest of the planning commission, I think she's got experience in a number of different venues, doing that sort of thing, so. Um, but in the meantime, we're gonna have a vacancy, and we're asking basically just for your, um, approval. I don't think this requires a motion, but just to let you know that we're issuing a notice, notice of vacancy and that the town charter gives, um, section 1-1-7-1-1 actually, gives authority to me to make that mission appointment, so. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up about this and give you an opportunity to give feedback if you have any, or certainly encourage you to tell any of your friends or acquaintances that you think might be interested. Notice out soon. Anything to add, Preston?
That's it.
Any questions or comments from this? We've had a really good planning mission for a long time, so get on, work with Pam and Preston. I'm doing something to recognize Doug. And now he's been involved for a long time. And then we'll talk to you next month about each stepping up. All right. Took that one, and that brings us to town manager's report. You want to highlight for us, Preston?
Yes, sir. I'll, a couple of things. Walk in and ask questions if you'd like. We've hired Bobby Barnes as a public works maintenance operator one, thrilled about that. Yeah, he worked really hard diligently throughout the summer as a parks seasonal employee. And, um, uh, just thrilled to have him on board. He's gonna be a great, great member of the team and, uh, already out there jumping in on a bunch of different stuff, so Bobby's great. You've all have probably seen him out there, but if you see someone new sporting a Ridgeway truck, just walk around doing something in Ridgeway, we'll make it. It's probably Bobby. Say hi. They fully staffed. That's an interesting question and open to interpretation, of course, but yes, I think we feel comfortable that they they were. Yes. Thanks, Russ. Daniel, report to the International Dark Sky Association went in before the October 1st deadline. Could I be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Val and Dave for all their, Terry, too? Uh, you doing, you didn't do your stuff?
No, I never did. I called them all.
Okay, well, Val and Dave, not Terry, for all their hard work on getting that report where it's supposed to be. I mean, it was quite a report. I don't remember the, I think the requirement is like a page and they put together like 16 pages for this.
Sounds like Val.
Sounds like Val. That was out of my conversation. 16-page conversation. Bless his heart.
Not in the southern sense, the furthest Colorado says.
Shane and I met with Jennifer Allison and Julie Constance with CDOT a few weeks back. It was a month ago now. Had a great conversation to get their perspective on the speeding issue. Uh, we're on a lot of different stuff, but specifically the speeding issue on, on Sherman, uh, eastbound and westbound. There were some really, really interesting and cool outcomes from that meeting, I think. Shane, you're welcome to jump in with your thoughts, but I think I kind of detailed what, what they're gonna be doing on their end and presenting to CDOT headquarters. But in the meantime, they got us an estimate for some some permanent speed radar signs that I think would be solar-powered and highly visible, uh, one on either side, eastbound and westbound, which could do wonders, I think.
It's getting turned. I don't know. Just play.
I don't, I don't.
They have a battery.
I'm sure there's a battery.
I, I just appreciate Preston's response.
I get that question.
You do, like, I know. Actually, yeah, there's probably a battery or some sort of. Anyway, that, we've, uh, I think Pam has incorporated that in the budget, but of course, we all need to deliberate. Figured out if that needs to stay for 2022, but Shane and I were big fans of the idea. Or at least I was. I don't speak for Shane. Shane, anything else on that meeting?
No, it was a convenient, and I'm in favor of the radar signs. We could issue, at least, people would see. And were we, were we correct earlier in the meeting when we said that the state of Colorado doesn't allow cameras to record people speeding and then send them a ticket later?
Uh, yeah, there's, it's been weekly challenge. It's not allowed. It's not about regular. Every week of challenge I've seen. Right, that's the way it was. That's what we said.
What about, too, in addition to the, the radar signs? I, a couple of people brought up extending the crosswalks and crosswalk signage to the to, uh, the end of the, the end of Sherman, where we kind of come into the school there.
Yeah, that was one of the discussions during, was providing the state possibly providing some pedestrian signs or some more signage. And also, one of the concerns that we voiced in that they saw, they were able to, meaning to consume and see the sign placing in the distance, and there's some big gaps, um, in signage, like speed limit signs. And so they were getting interested at possibly putting more signs in those areas, especially coming downhill into town between where it's 45 to 30 and the flashing sign, there's no, um, speed, or, you know, the slowing.
Yep.
And so they were getting dressed at, and then from Mary to Amelia, there's no sign maintaining the 25-speed in there, and that's what we're seeing. We've increased enforcement in there. Contacts in three weeks.
I hear you.
And, you know.
That's great.
We also did a study in Preston. We have all the results from that. We did a four-day study. Clock on radar, 525 cars a day at different times during the day in Sherman. At different points on Sherman, and we determined based on that view and spreadsheet that 99.7% of drivers were at speed limit.
So Shane, can you run it by me again? Coming down the hill, they were looking at more speed limit signage? I feel like that's clear and just ignored. It's actually a great delight in slowing down and heading into.
The state has a metric for
Okay.
being in distance to remind drivers.
Gotcha.
And so their, uh, um, their opinion was that maybe we needed one, there needed to be a fresher sign from the 45 to the 30 between there.
Okay.
And, um, the, the two, um, production crossings that one down by the bank and one up Amelia that actually have a median and big signs, and if the people press the button, they actually have the strobe light, right?
Yeah.
Um, I think part of the problem is, you know, people don't actually press the button to get the lights.
That's some of what we were seeing, and then some confusion. We worked with the crossing guards. We worked with the school and crossing guards to explain what they need to do, because a lot of people's confusion is that yellow flashing lights don't necessarily mean they have to stop. And when we've made traffic contacts, that's, that's their complaint is, well, it doesn't mean I have to stop. Well, like, already pedestrians present in the crosswalk. Right. Then you have to stop. But if there's not up there yet, or, you know, a lot of times the kids and parents will be kind of separated. And kids will push the button and wait for the parents to catch up before they go, and some people's confusion is, well, it's just flashing yellow, and we're headed to go. So we actually got the crossing guards to go out and stop in the middle and wait and then come back with the sign. That seems to do it, but.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, there's, there's always a confusion and, you know, the excuses.
I was gonna say, is it confusion or is it excuses? Because it sounds like the last.
You're not actually, my wife and I have this debate all the time, because when I'm walking downtown, I step out. I'm like, I'm gonna get in the crosswalk to let them know that they gotta stop, and the right is always like, you can take yourself. But, you know, I can jump back fast enough, but I'm like, but if, if you're stopped and standing at the edge of the crosswalk.
They're not sure if you're crossing or if you're. Then I stop in front of them once I have eye contact, and then I stare at them like, you may move later. I guess it's a new, you're like, East Coast dance, like, they're not gonna hit me. I'm going. They're gonna.
That's, that's my theory, by the way. And I, the, the signs that we have at the crosswalks downtown legally have to come down, I think, as of October 1st.
They're still up.
When is it October 1st?
Yeah, it's right at October 1st because of snow.
Right.
Rachel for snow.
And then.
I thought of that the other day, just, I forgot.
It's located there. They're staying up, and I find that I'm always crashing downtown and somebody's hit one of them and turned it, so I'm always turning it back.
I drive out once a week to stop, and it's a wide, I'm, you know.
Yeah. Well, thanks. We really appreciate your efforts and, uh, you know, I, I think we do it enough, we'll make a dent, get people to.
And I think the sweetest is that if once CDOT gets us those quotes, I think we've had enough comments from the public, we need to fund it. And figure out how that's gonna go down.
For about $5,000.
Do we ever, do we decide as? Do we ever, do we decide as we want to budget it for?
I don't think so.
Cause I think they got disqualified because of COVID. This is like the like portable ones.
Portable speed bump.
Yeah.
I was gonna say speed bumps. I understand the following like in the winter time, that's.
Well, they were removable. It was very, it was a twenty twenty thing that said we don't need to go.
Yeah, they're pretty, you knew that council members in the skirt of the side streets.
Okay.
And they're removable.
Okay.
They're plastic.
Yeah.
Something like that. Which I read the speed bumps that we talked about for some of the side streets and just to get people with, you know, I have a lot of people to shoot down off it. I think we should, I think they should go back. Couple of them, but that's a separation.
What else for us tonight?
Yeah, take twenty more seconds to highlight a couple of things and we'll move on. Working with the Telluride Foundation on the Affordable Housing Development Incentives Grant Program. I'm not really working on the program, but working on. A potential letter of interest for that specific program, which was created by House Bill twenty one. Twelve seventy one for funding infrastructure type. Funding to help projects just like this and we think that we might have a very good qualifying. Might be a very good qualified project and the town would qualify based on some of the changes we've been acting over and stuff like that. So that's exciting. Stay tuned on that.
Is that, I have a question on that. Is that gonna be potentially helpful in the Telluride Foundation project?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
Did you just say that?
It's okay. It's important.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm positive.
Great.
That November tenth will be something that you all have to. Remove or ratify.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Sorry.
The space creating project update meetings have gone to monthly. Next one's on October twenty seventh. I just want to go to the back of events. We have a workshop next Thursday on Amelia Street preliminary design. Joanne cannot wait to present. What, what her run and they're working on for months.
Mine's been ready for months. I just need to get. But your introductions are the best stuff.
So that'll be next, or the twenty first, the budget retreat is a couple of days later, Saturday. Uh, because we have time to travel to Hawaii. Yeah, yeah. But that's good. I think it went really well last year. We'll just do it in this room unless anybody has any other thoughts, somewhere to go, not Hawaii, but somewhere. Conversation.
So I'm sorry, the twenty third is our budget workshop? It's not on my calendar.
I will put it on here. I will get it on here.
Yeah, just, I mean, you don't need to send me a calendar invite. Just, I'm not sure how I. I had it on here. What's the timing? Nine to two?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I got. Except for that amazing joke. That was a pretty good joke.
I told that when my classroom was on the line.
Where's the bobbies?
No, no, no joke. You can just keep me on mute, so.
Man, the pressure.
Oh, I actually, I do have a joke. It's topical. Why are graveyards fenced? Cause people are dying to get in. My Halloween joke.
That's almost as good as the cat scan. Okay, anybody have any questions for staff or Preston or anybody else about? Either his manager's report or any other question. Been on your mind? So we have an executive session.
I've actually got a couple of questions. One for Preston. I know when you were working this stuff on the, on the crossings. Were, were those folks actually with? With CDOT or, or, or other organizations? I, I guess why I'm asking that is if it was not, did we actually have an opportunity to discuss the hub long about?
Yeah, so Russ, we met with Julie Constance. I think her title is the Regional Transportation Director for. Region five, right? Then Jennifer Allison, who's just like a traffic engineer, I picked it up, but I think that's her title. I, I ninety nine point nine percent sure I approached the subject of the hub long about. With them, just to make sure it was on their radar, long about, roundabout at Railroad Street. That's what you're referring to, Russ?
Yes, sir.
Approached the subject and they, they thought it was interesting. There was nothing they could. Do to, to further to headquarters or anything. That's something that will need to be discussed at the. Yeah, the TPR, TPR group. I've already had a discussion with Michelle Haynes with Region ten about that. So at a, at an upcoming TPR meeting, we'll need to. You know, pose or opine that that's, that's something that, that needs to be done for a number of reasons there, so. There, there's an avenue forward to try to get it on the list at the, at the, at the TPR level. We're just not there yet.
Okay. And, and then I also have a follow up for, for John and. Where, where are we with actually being able to get our training and go out and clean our mile or two of highway?
You've been very good at standing on me about this, Russ. Unfortunately, the gal and CDOT, who I've been trying to deal with on that is just. She must just be slammed because she constantly tells me she can get back to me and then doesn't. She, I've got to call her again because I. With this meeting coming up, like a week or so ago, I reached out and I haven't looked back, so I, I keep trying. Oh, but I'm sorry. I don't have a news for you.
No worries.
Thanks for, thanks for keeping it in your forefront of your mind. All right. So let's see, before the executive session, let's talk about. The Rights of Nature Resolution. Books very helpfully. Up draft for me. Does that make sense to you? Or do you want to do with it after?
No, I think it's fine now. Yeah, actually, my apologies. I, I took oversight on my part to didn't get the resolution on this agenda, so sorry about that.
It's all right. And I've been, again, that was something else that last week I've just been scrambling to try to get some upward. And it just came through today, so. I mean, this is really, I've, I've had some help from the people who actually did the initial effort. Trying to remember where. Where it was. But they helped hugely with this. They asked me, you know, are we looking at, is our watershed beyond Comodore or, or what? I said, it's, it's really not the Comodore. It's. It's, it's, well, in the, in truth, it's Beaver Creek, right? Beaver Creek is the creek that comes out of the Sneples Range and eventually drains into Cotton Creek. But it did Beaver Creek. Oh, it drains into Dallas.
But we have a watershed protection.
I know we do. I know we do. This is just, this is, the, the idea behind this is to give. Potential legal standing in court to our. Our. Our natural environment where our watershed is, is primarily where they've been doing this. Ironically, it's, interestingly, it's also. Brought out in Dana's packet that she gave. She asked about it, but I think that generally like the. The effort that. Nedwin did that somebody sent to me and spurred my sending this to you and suggesting we pursue it. That's a non binding resolution. I think we talked about, we first talked about this. There, there's another approach which is included in, in this. Resolution that's in front of us. It's called a guardianship. This is called a clause. It's the second to the last, whereas on. What is it? The second page, first bottom of the, bottom third of the second page. It actually talks about. Creating guardianship, which would. In theory, allow us to actually either appoint or elect. Individual, specific people to be the waterways human voices is the way they talk about. So my, my intention here is to. Have this. Draft to give to you guys so that you can ask any questions or tell me that, that it's just too complicated. I want to pursue it or. Or say, let's put it on the agenda for, for next month and talk about approving. Either with or without the guardianship clause or any other thoughts you might have. I apologize for the short notice, so. I figure we can have a short discussion tonight and. Have a longer discussion next month based on what you guys think about the concept in general.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, this is actually what one of the films that was, was about.
Would it be okay if we pushed this to next month? So time to digest it.
Absolutely.
Not right after school or right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, 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 I.
It is short enough. It's, yeah, again, my intention for tonight was just. To explain like the guardianship clause because that's different than what I first suggested to you. And the people who helped draft this pointed out to me that that's an additional. Aspect of it that some communities have put in and they gave examples of the museum doing it. So we can, we can be done discussing it. I basically was hoping you still were interested in pursuing it and we can take it up. Next month, put it on the agenda and discuss it while we're there. And I guess I would encourage you to find time next month to look at it, compare it to stuff that you may find online and. Write up any edits that you, that you think that they would like to, to see. Streamlining it or adding anything else, but yeah, we can, we can call that good. I like it. I'm a supporter of that stat. There's a lot of good stuff in this. Yes, look forward to that. That's all. That's what we do. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Then. If the agenda calls to the executive session and then the committee reports. I'd like to do any other committee reports anybody has first and have the session be the last thing we do. That's okay. I don't know if anybody has anything. Sounds like not. Is that right? Okay, so I think we're ready for the executive session. Bob, you want to give us the, the citation?
I'd be happy to. Let me take myself off of mute here first, so.
Amazing how we still do that.
So if we could get an executive session pursuant to twenty four six four oh two four E for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding. Application for water rights, case number two thousand nineteen CW three zero eight nine. And pursuant to twenty four six four oh two four E for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding a first. Right at, right to acquire a portion of homes related to the rural homes LLC workforce housing project.
So.
Motion made by, motion made by Kevin.
Councilmember Beck. Forelli.
And Gramley.
Hi.
Bacon.
Bye.
Skyler.
Hi.
Mayor Kurt Tim Meyer.
Hi.
Okay, thanks everybody. With that, we'll ask anybody on Zoom.
I think we're good.
We're good. Okay.
All right. Are you ready for the citation then?
Yes.
It is October thirteenth and the time is nine fifty three PM. For the record, I'm the town attorney. As required by the open meeting law, this executive session is being electronically recorded. Also present at this executive session are the following persons. Mary, can you do the roll call?
Uh, yeah, we have some councillor Beck, councillor Forelli, councillor Laken, councillor. Gramley, councillor Skyler and mayor Clark. Oh, and councillor, Mayor Tim Meyer on Zoom.
And myself, Beau Nerland as the town attorney and Preston Neal as the town administrator. This is an executive session pursuant to twenty four six four oh two four E for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice. Regarding application for water rights, case number two thousand nineteen CW three zero nine eight. And Colorado revised statute twenty four six four oh two four E for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding. First right to acquire a portion of the homes related to the rural homes LLC workforce housing project. I caution each participant to discon, to confine all discussions to the stated purpose of the executive session. And that no formal action may occur in the executive session. If at any point in the executive session, any participant believes. That the discussion is going outside the proper scope of the executive session, please interrupt the discussion and make an objection.
As.
Town engineer.
Oh, yeah. And the town engineer, Ms. Fagan. As the town attorney, it is my position that the. Contents of the executive session constitute a privileged attorney client communication, therefore. Is my recommendation that no recording be kept of this executive session. Five PM, we will conclude the executive session and return to the open meeting. The time is now nine twenty five PM. We have concluded an executive session. That was held pursuant to twenty four six four oh two four E for the purpose of receiving legal advice. Regarding an application for water rights, case number two thousand nineteen CW three zero nine eight. And Colorado CRS twenty four six four oh two four E for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding a right. First right to acquire a portion of the homes related to the rural home LLC workforce housing project. If at any point, any council member or any participant in the executive session feels that we went outside the proper scope of the executive. Session, please make an objection on the record. Hearing none, I'll turn it over to you, the mayor.
Thanks, Beau. Anything else? Unless I hear an objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned.
Thanks, Russ. Thanks, Beau.
Thank you, everybody.